Get in your chair.
Everybody just kind of grab a table to our chairs. Gonna give our cameraman a minute to get down to the... One minute, one minute, less than a minute. I'd like to call this June 6th session of the Hoyok City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley?
Here.
Bresnahan?
Here.
Graney? Jordan?
Here.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi? Lopez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Roman?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
Thank you. First wanted to say a special recognition, unfortunately Counselor Graney could not be here tonight. He gives his regards to everyone, but he's receiving an award tonight from Hoyok Community College for a number of years of service and his commitment to the community and certainly as an alum and as well as an educator from there. So we give congratulations to Counselor Graney. Certainly next, we have a number of special guests who are very dear in our heart, as always, and they're going to be escorted up by Counselor McGee. And that is representatives, as many as wish to come forward of our Hoyok Fire Department. We want to welcome up our firefighters for once again, another great and wonderful job saving life and limb down in the flats recently in that tragic fire that took place on Northeast Street. We want to thank so many of our firefighters that came and participated in that heroic effort. And it would really be my pleasure, for anybody else that would like to come in, please, by all means. We'd love to recognize everybody. Okay, great. And it's really my pleasure, first, we're gonna have a little brief program. I'm gonna recognize Counselor McGee to say a few words, and then we're going to hear from our fire chief. Counselor McGee.
Alright, thank you. Brief program, it's only ten pages. Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. First, let me thank the entire city council for approving the order that I filed in January with regards to recognizing our men and women at the fire department for their efforts on what they did on New Year's Day. One thing, you know, this is not political tonight, so let's put all that aside. This is about recognizing the work that was done on that day. January 1st, at 8:53 a.m., the fire department received a call. Minutes later, six firefighters arrived on scene to 106 Northeast Street. It was engulfed from the third floor up. Those six, let me tell you a little about what they did. And the chief can elaborate on what trucks and everything else. On the ladder, when the ladder showed up and went up to the third, fourth floor, Brian Kraus, Anthony DeRoy, got on the ladder, climbed to the top, and started physically pulling people out of the window and into safety. Seven people saved. On the bottom, guiding that ladder was Daniel Stafford. And hopefully I get the facts correct. Next, while that was happening, Captain James Cattigan, who I grew up with, he ran in with Lawrence Jackson into the fire and started using the hose to back the fire up in order to save more people. Down, while making sure the water was there, was James Turigny. Hopefully I said that right, Trigger is how I know him. They, those six people, saved lives that night. That's what has to be recognized. That effort and that commitment to the city of Hoyok. Their sons, they're married, they have kids. They sacrificed everything to save those people. To me, I want to recognize you for what you did. So, in honor of that, on behalf of the entire city council, we recognize the outstanding work, dedication, and bravery protecting the lives of residents and homeowners and property owners. Signed by President, City Council Jordan, attested to by the city clerk Brendan Murphy McGee. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for what you did. I don't know how I follow that up. I'd like to thank the city council for this proclamation. It means a lot to the fire department and all the hard work and men and women in the Hoyok Fire Department. We work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to protect lives and property in the city. I'd also like to take a moment of silence for those who lost their lives on that day, January 1st. Thank you, and God bless.
You took care of the room, I mean, it's almost empty now.
So we're truly blessed to have such great public servants. As you know, all of our public workers just do a fantastic job. Certainly the fire department at the helm, police department, our DPW workers throughout, our teachers, all the way down. We're very, very blessed, and this is just one more example. And we're always reminded of those heroic efforts. So, we just thank you so much for being able to join us. And so now we go to a couple items that we have on the table. We currently have item one, which is relative to the municipal budget. I believe this will be staying on the budget until we conclude the budget hearings. We will ultimately be voting on the budget on June 21st, and if necessary, the 22nd. We then have a second item relative to those parcels of land.
Yeah, make a motion to remove Agenda Item Number Two from the table.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to remove Item Number Two from the table relative to a committee report from DGNR relative to declaring three parcels related to the geriatric authority as surplus property. All in favor of removing from the table?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so Mr. President, I think we have a amendment by Counselor Lopez that carved out the congregate, left that...
Out of the package.
Out of the package.
So let's just refresh folks' memory on that. Yes? Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So just to refresh everyone's memory as to procedurally where we left off on May 16th. The report of the committee came before the body. The original committee report was to declare all three parcels surplus. At the committee, at the full council meeting on the 16th, the council voted to remove Parcel 117-00148, which contains the congregate house, out of the package. So currently, as it stands right now, the committee report has been amended to be just the other two parcels.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee report as amended.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and approve the committee report as amended by the council on May 16th. Is there any discussion?
I just...
Counselor Lopez.
I just want to speak in favor of doing the two parcels only, and hopefully Hoyok Housing and the mayor will come back with the final disposition for the Hoyok Congregate. But I will not support declaring surplus the Hoyok Congregate housing.
Okay.
Very good. Any other discussion? Counselor McGivern.
Just a clarification, Mr. President. With removing Parcel 117-00018, that essentially denies the request. And that parcel will no longer be before us.
Correct. The administration, the mayor, and his department had requested all three parcels. The council, by removing this, would only grant that authority for the other two, correct?
So the city would not be able to sell the property without that parcel being declared surplus?
Correct. That is, right, you're correct. Statutorily, that parcel would not be able to be sold because it has not yet been declared available for disposition. Thank you. Yes. Counselor Bartley.
Just to clarify, Mr. President, I believe you said the congregate house was the last three digits, or 148?
That's what I'm looking at here on the committee report.
Okay, alright, just clarifying.
Let's just make sure we got that right.
Yep.
I believe there's a little map attached. Correct, 148 is the one that has the congregate house on it.
Yes, President.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Okay. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 people in the room at the moment, as we all are aware, 11. This will require 10 votes to pass, okay? There's a state statute that governs this. So, 10 votes required to declare a piece of property surplus and available for disposition. There's no further discussion. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is on adoption of the committee report as amended. That is just two parcels, not the congregate housing parcel. Clerk will call the roll, please.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you have declared those two parcels surplus and available for disposition. The third parcel remains city property and not available for disposition. Okay? And that disposes of Item Number Two. We are now up to public comment. Public comment, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. We have 10 people who have requested to address the city council. I'm gonna need a rule suspension for two things. One, if we're going to allow 10, not 7, to speak. Two, we also have two people, one, someone from South Hadley, and the other from New Britain, Connecticut, that would like to address the city council. So under the rule, you have to be a Hoyok resident, up to seven people at one particular meeting. Is someone so inclined to amend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow non-residents of Hoyok to address the council and to allow more than seven people to address the city council. But we'll keep it to the 15 minutes, how's that sound, right? We'll just amend accordingly, everybody will be 10 people, that would be a minute and a half each. Because under the rule, it's 15 minutes, not to exceed. All in favor of the rule suspension?
Aye.
Opposed?
So moved. Okay, we're gonna begin first with, in order that they signed up, Jay Ferreira of 6 Taylor Street, Hoyok. Jay, welcome.
Thank you very much. Jay Ferreira, 6 Taylor Street, Hoyok, Mass. Two quick things. I just want to speak in favor of the Ban the Box proposal. It's, in my opinion, it's in Hoyok's best interest for us to adopt this proposal. There's value in the city, to the city, to have the option to hire folks who have had some crime, committed crime in their past. Many of us, myself included, have made mistakes in the past, and I think it's really in Hoyok's character to look past that and to allow folks to apply for those positions. So, for me, it's really an important thing, and I hope that we'll consider that. Secondly, I just wanted to speak really quickly in favor of Kip Foley's application to the CPA Committee. He was on the CPA Committee in Hadley. He's a really good person, easy to work with, and I think he'd really bring a lot to the table, so I hope we'll consider him down the line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Next up is Jacqueline Balas of 295 High Street. Jacqueline, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I want to speak in favor of the Fair Chance Rule, also known as Ban the Box. If enacted, this is state law. If enacted here in Hoyok, it will also follow the lead of cities like Worcester and Boston. If enacted, would allow applicants with criminal backgrounds not to have to answer the question, "Have you ever been convicted of a felony?" on city employment applications. So they may be able to at least interview and disclose it if at that point, not before a person has a chance to be judged on their talents and skillsets. I believe the city council wants the same outcomes that we want. Those outcomes for people to invest in their local economy, be able to take care of themselves and their families, and be productive members of society. People coming home from prison and jails are coming back to Hoyok communities, and Hoyok is one of the state cities highly impacted by incarceration. Since we want the same outcomes as the council, this should be a priority to enact. In fact, our duty to do everything in our power to remove some of the many barriers that people face upon returning home from prison and jail. People are facing many other barriers, including family reunification, getting children back, pursuing higher education, securing housing, and gainful employment. As a Latin American mother and formerly incarcerated woman, I don't know where my children and I would be of organizations such as Neighbor Manor that do believe that I am someone to invest in. I am not disposable because of my criminal background. I went to prison and while I determined to change my life and the lives of others, including the lives of my children. By enacting the Fair Chance Rule, you too will change the lives of people, my people, the very people marginalized, discriminated against, unfairly targeted by racist policies through mass incarceration. So I implore that the council consider enacting the Fair Chance Rule. Thank you.
David Goss, 21 Sidney Avenue, David, welcome.
Thank you, Kevin. And also, I'm here, first thing, I'm also in favor of the Ban the Box proposal. And I think I've been here almost enough that I could make a motion to take it out of committee, and it might actually get seconded. But anyway, I know many people, you know, Jackie's a good example, people who've served their time and have become very upstanding people. And I think the city, by doing this, would set a good example. And it's a very balanced proposal, too, because it would get people in the door, but we'd still, a core check would be conducted to, you know, to check on the person, and people wouldn't be placed in positions where they'd be dealing with children, or the elderly, or people like that. So I think it's a good proposal that should be considered. And the second thing, since I won't be able to be here on Thursday night, first of all, I also want to commend the fire, our dedicated firefighters. And, you know, it's, I mean, they've made their position on this very clear, and I really have to respectfully disagree with the chief. Because we have our station on High Street, and that was a combination of the Main and Maple Street stations combined into one. I know Counselor Lopez was against this way back when, and it's being used now as a pretext to make what should be two stations into one. I mean, we're just going through some musical chairs, but we're taking Engine 2 permanently offline. And we had, you know, that terrible example on New Year's Day. Some pretend differently, but that, if we can't learn from that, you know, it's, you know, really disgraceful, so... And the irony is, I think most people here, most counselors, most of the public would be willing to fully fund the fire department if only the administration would request it. So I'm not sure where we go from here. I mean, Counselor Bresnahan's got a good proposal questioning if they can even take an engine company offline without approval from the city council. I mean, that seems like almost a school superintendent taking a school out of service without consulting the school committee. So, again, I'm really, you know, if public safety, saving lives isn't our top priority, I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's gotta go real short, here we go. Hi, I'm Gabriel Qualia, I live here on Harrison Avenue. I'd first like to state that we have one of the best city clerks in the state of Massachusetts. They say that democracy dies in darkness, or something like that, and you help shed light by your responsiveness and your attention to detail, and I want to thank you, Ms. McGee. No problem. I've come tonight to speak against adoption of Item 17H, the special permit for methadone and suboxone clinics. Well, first personally, my opinion that it's a mistake to pass, but I'd also like to point out that I hold letters here from Professor Gary Blanchard, president of the Massachusetts Alcohol and Drug Addiction Counselors, the planning board, there have been two letters from the planning board, and a joint letter from Providence Hospital and Hoyok Health Centers stating the state and federal regulations is sufficient and against passage of this ordinance. Here's a short passage of the letter from Providence Hospital and Hoyok Health Center that I think is key. Sorry. "At a time when there is increased awareness and recognition that addiction is a disease and the people who suffer from it are worthy of treatment, not judgment, this ordinance restricting locations of key programs to industrial zones, which this still does, restricts it to just industrial zone, one industrial zone, and that are disconnected from our community spaces, continues to send the message of marginalization and stigmatization. The goal of treatment of opioid addiction is for individuals to reintegrate into the community, for people to get back to the activities that each of us strives to do, work, family, school, parenting, and other productive activities. We can only meet these goals if our entire community helps to support solution and commits to work together. We believe that the evidence is clear medication-assisted treatment works and has the potential to continue to improve and save many lives. Our goal is to make a difference and see our community thrive, not die from opioid overdoses and long-term addiction. Regretfully, we believe that this ordinance would have the effect of limiting access to treatment and put undue burdens and restrictions on providers, and is being introduced at a time when our community needs just the opposite, all of us working together to provide solutions and opportunity." And I have, these have all been entered into the record, and I hope you all have read them, but if any of you haven't managed to peruse them, I brought plenty of extra copies today. And I also wanted to say that in light of that ordinance, and also of others being introduced today, I wanted to just bring up Matthew 2540, which states, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Thank you very much.
I just wanted to come here tonight to ask this council who you all want to be. Given the presence on the agenda of bills literally corralling away the poorest of Hoyok citizens and trying to curb and punish their First Amendment right to ask for help via panhandling, and there's been plenty of precedent for panhandling as a First Amendment right, bills that would in essence be criminalizing poverty outside of submission to often very flawed social service intervention, the consideration of bills that would further economically burden needle exchange in the middle of an opioid epidemic, and hamper its mission to stop the transmission of HIV and Hep C in the middle of this crisis, and finally, an ordinance which would limit the most medically effective treatment for the opioid epidemic. An ordinance which your own planning board and countless medical professions and the affected population have pleaded with you time and time again to oppose and discard, and even given the fact that at an earlier meeting, a counselor here equated poor people asking for help to animals. And the only counselor to speak up in outrage at the remark among you was also the only one among you to have lived experience of homelessness. None of the rest of you stood up to say that that was wrong. Are you a council representing all of your constituents in a city in which so many people are poor and so many people have been affected by opioid use? Or are you a council which stands only with those who would rather have the poor and addicted be shunted aside or incarcerated, or underserved by underfunded social services, or even let them die of overdoses on a waiting list for treatment as long as those poor and addicted people aren't dirtying up their backyards? All I seem to see you doing lately is proposing and discussing legislation which should make the lives of marginalized Hoyok citizens harder. I'm calling to your consciousness to oppose all the bills and the ordinances I've listed. You have the potential to be a council which stands for all, which improves access, a council which, for example, could support Ban the Box today. You could be a compassionate and humane council which stands up for the poor, expands treatment and harm reduction resources, and innovates non-carceral ways to address opioid use, as many Massachusetts and towns have bravely done. Reading local coverage just this year, I've witnessed so many of you stand up to represent all of Hoyok citizens at one point or another. Instead of that, do you really want to be the reactionary and retrogressive council which opens itself up to First Amendment and ADA-based lawsuits? A council which proves itself publicly to be against freedom of speech, against those with disabilities and addiction? Against such a huge swath of your most vulnerable constituents? Are you so complacent in the idea that poor people, people on drug treatment, and their families and friends don't vote? Are you so desperate to assert local control, or council control versus mayoral control, that you don't care who suffers when you do it? I'm asking you, as a poor Hoyok resident in drug treatment myself, as someone who's just been lucky enough not to be homeless, as most of us are only some bad luck away from homelessness, as a fellow human being, not an animal, to be your best selves, to look to your own humanity, and represent us all. Thank you.
I think this is Dignow Ortiz, Hail from 12th North Main Street, South Hadley.
Thank you for having me. I mean, for me, it's a privilege to be here today, first of all. And I just knew about the Neighbor to Neighbor Program not too long ago, and then I started finding myself with it because, in my life experience, I had a... with it because in my life experience, I had a brother who was in prison, and he never got a chance. He never got a second chance in life, and he ended up committing suicide. So, basically, I'm in this program representing these people because I feel within we need to be, we need to show them that we're a hope, and that we're here for the, we're here for the right reasons. And the fact that I'm here today shows that I'm here to be a hope for these young citizens. Some of them, they don't have the life experience they need. Some of them are judged. When I came here, I didn't have a GED or anything like that. I just needed a chance. And somebody stood to stand up to the plate and say, hey, you know what? I'm gonna give you an opportunity for you to succeed. Got my bachelor's degree. I help support people in the community, build homes. Right now, I'm working with friends of the homeless. And I'm just here today because I want these young people to see that there is hope out there for them. And the same way I got a chance, they deserve a second chance. And just have faith in what we do and continue to push forward. Thank you. That's all I gotta say.
Next up, Alberto Duarte, 119 Willows Street, Britton, Connecticut. Welcome from Britton, Connecticut. He's honored.
Thank you. Anyway, my name's Alberto Duarte, and I represent Neighbor to Neighbor. I myself is a convicted felon, a drug addict who is in recovery. So when I heard about people in this council saying that people are animals, that's highly unacceptable. Because if we were to talk about people in here like that, we would be escorted out of here because people would voice their opinion. So thus, the person who was speaking was judged. This isn't a church, this is a democracy. I can tell you my story about getting arrested, being incarcerated, getting a job afterwards and going to school. I, for one, do not like that box. So my story goes, when I got arrested in the year 2000 for a domestic dispute protecting myself, I did three years probation, got incarcerated for three years, left that program upon receiving five scholarships to go to college for law school. I got to have dinner with Hurricane Carter in the state of Hartford. I turned five scholarships down to go to CNA school. Not only did I go, not was I only the class clown, but I took it seriously. I graduated number one in my class, the 98 percentile. Ninety-eight. But I don't know how many people were in my class that quit or couldn't hack it. So once I graduated from there, I tried getting a job in a casino in Connecticut down Foxwood, just like you guys have an MGM opening up in Springfield. Now, I went through classes over there, or training. Third day of training, they pulled me out. Why? Because they did a criminal background check on me. I have nothing to hide. So upon so, they told me they couldn't give me a job. Why? Because I'm a felon. Because I beat somebody up protecting myself. They told me I needed a lawyer if I wanted a job. Now, if you remember, I just said that I turned down five scholarships to go to law school. I represented myself, shirt and tie, my awards, letters of recommendation. I went up against judges, the tribal judges, their lawyers and everything else. I had everything overturned. They gave, they offered me a job. This is my experience, strength, and hope. If you guys can see that, you can see that in people in your society, and not just think about everything that's in here, trying to build up other companies. Because you're right, you have the people out here who committing crimes, they can't get a job, what are they gonna do? Commit more crimes again. And all you guys are gonna do is look at him and say, hey, I knew he was gonna do it. Instead of trying to help them and educate them, just like people in here should get educated on drug addiction, homelessness, and everything else. Because that's the bottom line. Because you know what? They will become productive members of society, they will be paying taxes, they will be paying taxes for you guys to keep your jobs. Because if you don't have your jobs, that's it.
Juan Sanchez, 10 Gate House Road, Hoyoke, welcome again.
Good evening, councilors. Juan Sanchez, 10 Gate House Road. I'm here to speak in favor of the Ban the Box initiative that our Counselor Roman presented. I'm here, I'm supporting my friends from Neighbor to Neighbor on this issue. The number that keeps on popping to my head is 79. Seventy-nine is the number of arrangements that my father has. Up until about three years ago, my father is now clean, employed, but I think to myself how many more opportunities he could have had, had he not had to check a box that removed him from being able to get any kind of employment opportunity, which then kind of goes downward from there. I'm not gonna go on a list of how it goes downward, we can all imagine. But with that said, I hear a lot of complaints about, oh, people don't have jobs, or people aren't working, or they don't pay taxes. But then again, if we're not setting the example of giving the opportunities to be able to become tax-paying citizens, to become productive people in society, or what's expected as productive, then we're just complaining just to complain. We, as a city, need to be able to set the example for other businesses wanting to come into this city and let them know that, you know, we don't, here, we ban the box, and we expect other businesses coming to also ban the box. That way, we can judge a person upon who they are, their skill set, and what they have to offer, not because they checked the box. Because too many times, it causes too much judgment, too much, you know, like I said, judgment. With that said, the second thing that I want to bring up is the appointment of Kip Foley to the CPA committee. I just want to say I fully support the appointment of Kip Foley. He's a great guy, he has a lot of connections to the city, to the center school. I believe he also serves on the Holyoke Redevelopment Authority, and has so many connections and such an understanding of development and, you know, how to make the city better. So I want to also say that I fully support Kip Foley's appointment to the CPA committee. Thank you.
DJ O'Donner, 249 High Street, DJ, welcome. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to apologize how I signed in. I signed in at my business address. I'm actually a resident of East Hampton. So if you'll let me continue, I'm just here to speak on behalf of business in downtown Hoyoke and the parking. Years ago, we fought to get meters in downtown Hoyoke because everybody that works downtown was parking in the streets, so it was difficult to come and do business in the business district. So we got meters put in. The meters are great. Now we're seeing the rates at the parking garage go up substantially, so it's actually less expensive to park on the street for those people who only work two or three days a week. So what I'd like to speak on is, in your agenda, you have a parking meters and raising the rates at the parking meters. Because if you raise the rates in the parking meters, it's for short-term parking only. People, short-term is, that's what they're there for. And let the meter man also enforce the two-hour limit. There's parts that have a one-hour limit and a two-hour limit. He doesn't have the tools. Dan does a great job. He's always walking the street, and he's always giving the tickets when appropriate. But he doesn't have the tool to say, okay, this is a one-hour limit, or this is a two-hour limit. So he needs proper tools to do that. And if we can try to make sure that we keep the rates in the garage affordable, because what that does is it allows the employers who pay for the employees' parking downtown to say, okay, I'm gonna buy your parking pass, I want you to park in the parking garage, and it'll keep you off the street so that people can go into City Hall and conduct business, they can go into my business and conduct business, or any other businesses downtown. So if we can increase the rates on the meters, so it's less expensive to park in the garage, and then enforce the laws that's on there, all of them have stickers on them that say one-hour limit or two-hour limit. Dan doesn't have a tool to enforce that. And I also want to thank you for, glad it's the parking that you put in front of across the street here, you actually allowed a second handicap spot there and a loading zone, which allows people to come in and out to do business downtown, which is a good thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Last speaker, Radamos Lopez, 13 Brennan Street, Hoyoke.
Hello, my name is Radamos Lopez. I live on 13 Brennan Street. I'm here to talk about ban the box. I see that as a big problem for a lot of our youth and ex-felons coming out of jail, and not only for the youth, the people that have also been in the system for many years. Me personally, it has affected me a lot. Coming out of jail, reintegrating back into the community is hard, is hard. Just when you go sign the application, you gotta see that there is like, do I check it or no? Now, maybe I might get a chance because of my resume, you know? Maybe if I check no, maybe they might call me because of my resume. But if I check yes, they automatically might judge me and not call me back. So in my experience with that, I usually never get the job, you know? I only got a job because my brother was a manager at a company and he gave me the job. But I just don't see that, like, if you take that out, then you're giving hope to the people now, the people, the ex-felons, that maybe, okay, now maybe I could go get a job, now I don't have to sit here and go do something else to provide for myself and family. If you take that out, you're giving people more hope to become something and become part of the community. It's just, you know, it's like, you guys need to help us more in reintegrating back into the community. Me, myself, when I came out of jail, a month after I got shot five times, and the city did absolutely nothing to provide anything for me. They wanted me to go testify, go do this, go do that, to get me some type of medical help, mental health help, mental health help, nothing. They didn't do nothing. So I had to fend for myself and basically, you know, just, I mean, it's just, I hate getting into that topic because it pisses me off that I got no help. And what else do I need? I'm a victim of gun violence, you guys don't want to help me. Ex-felons, we got no help, we get looked down upon. If I get an interview, first thing they do is ask me, oh, so what were you locked up for? Then I say, oh, I was locked up for this, for these charges, carrying a firearm, trafficking heroin. Oh, bro, where were you arrested at? What did you do to go get arrested and do this? Like, they want everything detailed for detailed for detailed. I don't feel that I had to sit there and give my detail for every little crime that I committed. Now, you're judging me even more. Not only do I gotta check this box, I gotta explain to you why I got arrested. So I really think that should be taken out. And the other thing I want to talk about is on the Agenda 55, 56, and 57, on the Needle Exchange Program. I feel that the tapestry should maybe put a policy like for one-for-one needles, so like that you could force these addicts to pick up after themselves. So if they want 10 brand-new needles, make them go pick up 10 needles they threw out and bring them back so they could get 10 brand-new needles. Now, if you got all these people picking up for their needles, then you might have a cleaner city and less needles. Thank you.
Just so you know, we had, Mr. Lopez, we had the Chief of Police sit right in that chair over there, said, "I am approving this and supporting the needle exchange because it is a one-for-one exchange." So now we need to hold people accountable for what you just said, right? Yeah, thank you. All right, so that concludes our public comment. Thank you, everyone. Very thoughtful comments, we really appreciate it. And we now begin with Communication Number Three. Communication Number Three is subject to your approval. It's a letter from the mayor, by the way. "I hereby reappoint the following individual to serve as a member of the Planning Board of the City of Hoyoke, John Kelly of 56 Sterling Road, Hoyoke. He will serve a five-year term. Said term expire June 30th, 2022."
Motion received, confirmed the reappointment.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive the appointment and to confirm the reappointment. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Item Number Four. Item Number Four is a communication from the mayor. "I hereby appoint the following individual to serve as a member of the Planning Board, Mr. Gustavo Acosta, 3 Washington Avenue, Hoyoke. He will replace Anizia Asasa Figueroa and will serve the remainder of her term. Said term to expire February 12th, 2020."
Public Service?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive this new appointment and to refer it to the Public Service Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Communication Number Five. Communication Number Five is a communication from the mayor regarding the Congregate House parcel.
Received and DGR.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive Item Five and refer it to the DGNR Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Item Number Six. Item Number Six comes to us from the city clerk, Brenna Murphy-McGee. It's the minutes of our May 16th, 2017 meeting.
Steven, adopt.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the minutes of May 16th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Item Number Seven. Item Number Seven is a communication from Andrew Smith, Conservation Director. It's a letter designating Anya Ryan Duffy as a Conservation Commission member to the Community Preservation Committee. So as we recall, councilors, a number of these statutory boards each are afforded one member on the CPA board. Conservation is designating Anya Ryan Duffy, who happens to reside in Ward Six, by the way, to the CPA Committee. Motion on the floor has been made and seconded to receive, and to my knowledge, that's the second officially-appointed member of the CPA Committee. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Closed, so moved.
Is that the second or third? Because you're the first, we know that. You made history.
And if you're ever on a game show and somebody asks you, who was the first person appointed to the CPA Committee in Hoyoke, you can say Kevin Jordan and win the prize.
I thought I saw somebody from Planning.
So Ms. Duffy's too. Who, I don't, I don't think we have another commission yet.
I thought I saw somebody from Planning, okay, my mistake.
I don't think so yet.
Thank you, sir.
Brenna's helping us to keep all that in order, and soon we'll be having our three. I think we'll punch out here pretty soon. Okay, so that takes care of seven. And that brings us to eight. Eight is a communication from the Mass School Building Authority, 2017 Accelerated Repair Program Statement of Interest. Let's see if any action is needed on our part on this. Okay, this is a letter addressed to the mayor. "I'd like to thank the City of Hoyoke for their interest in the program. Overall, MSBA receives 73 potential project considerations."
Well, received and sent to the Joint Committee.
Second. Yep. Motion's been made and seconded to send this rather lengthy communication to the Joint Committee on School Committee and City Council. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Item Number Nine. Item Number Nine is from the Hoyoke Preservation Trust, Inc. It's a letter on behalf of the Board of Directors in support of the Friends of the Mata de la Rosa Preservation Society of Hoyoke, Inc. It's a letter from the clerk, Gene Yonkers.
Motion received.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. I believe we received a copy of this in our packets. All in favor of receiving?
Aye.
Mr. President, can we suspend and take 10, 11, and 12 as a package, please? And send them all to Public?
Service.
Service, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up Items 10, 11, and 12. These are all people seeking consideration as appointments from the city council to be at-large members of the CPA Committee. Item Number 10 is Audra Baset of 966 Main Street. Item Number 11 is Kevin Harmon of 13 Charles Street. Number 12 is Ken Foley, all to be, seeking to be considered as appointees of the Hoyoke City Council to the CPA Committee. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules, take all three as a package, and refer it to the Public Service Committee. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Closed, so moved.
Motion to take 13 or 14 as a package?
Second.
Motion's received.
Motion's been made and seconded to take Items 13 and 14 as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. 13 is the Board of Fire Commission Minutes of April 12th. Item Number 14 is the DPW Sewer Commission and Stormwater Authority Minutes of April 3rd. Is there a motion to approve? Or, excuse me, just to receive?
Motion received.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Those are both received. We're into petitions. First up, petition of Zulika Rivera for renewal of her First up, petition of Zulika Rivera for renewal of her second-hand license located at sixty-eight Cherry Street.
Motion to grant the renewal.
Second.
Do we know what the business is at?
Yes.
To refresh our memory.
Refrigeration, use appliances?
Repair.
Appliances.
Appliances, yeah.
Okay. Uh, could we have that come into committee? Because I have had people asking about deliveries, as well as, really, you know, what appears to be ten, twelve, fourteen machines sitting outside on the sidewalk and the side of the building. Is it, this is the same business that I'm thinking about?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And the question is?
Kind eyes variety, and I think she puts it out just to say that we're in business, and that's...
I don't know, is the outside a showroom? Um, I mean, to what extent are we allowing the activities here that, you've got refrigerators packed in, washing machines arrayed in an interesting pattern? I just want to know to...
Prefer to committee.
And let's have a discussion about, what are the expectations of the parties here?
Well, I'm fine with that, but I think you'd be very impressed by this person, so send it to committee.
I'm impressed, but I also have two eyes. I drive by it, and I'm intrigued.
Well, if you would just look over to the Ward Six side and focus on that, you'd be fine.
Yeah, it's nice and clean on the Ward Six side. It's like the Mason Dixon line.
We're good on the Ward Three side.
This is nice, and...
We're very happy with her on the Ward Three side, but, you know, whatever.
All right, so the motion is to send to, what committee would you?
I'd like to David.
Finance. Finance. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer item fifteen over to Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved. Maybe it's just as much as having a conversation. I'm not per se against it. It's just, I'd like to have a conversation.
We like conversations.
Yeah. That's what we're all about here, communication. Item number sixteen is a petition of the Greater Springfield Habitat for Humanity, a special permit request for a dimensional variation at two-seventy Pine Street.
Good gravy. DGR.
Received, DGNR.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the DGNR Committee. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, have you ever heard of a dimensional variation special permit?
Uh, no.
I believe this is for a Board of Appeals request, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I've just never heard of it.
Yeah. So, let's see what they're saying. Seeking a variation of the Hoyo Planning Board to do a following. A dimensional variation allowing construction of a single-family home on a lot with thirty-seven point five of frontage and seven point seven-five side yard and four thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet. Building permit will be obtained after this matter is resolved. I agree, this sounds like a Board of Appeals matter. What authority do we have to give variances to, um, our ordinances? I'm unaware of that.
Do we want to ask the Law Department, Mr. President?
Can we suspend the rules to ask for legal?
Have you had a chance, Crystal, to review this matter? I mean, or...
I actually don't get copies of this stuff.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so in fairness to Crystal, she's not going to have the benefit of having reviewed this in advance, so. We should send it to committee.
But I don't get a copy.
Yeah, we should, I recommend we send it to committee and then, with a copy to the Board of Appeals.
Yes. Okay, well, maybe a copy of the Law Department.
And a copy to the Law Department.
All right, and we can get an opinion.
Okay, so, motion is to send to DGNR with copies to the Law Department.
What would they just talk about?
Yeah, or we could just do that, yeah. Variance? Sounds like a setback change is what they're looking for. That would be, I think, is a Board of Appeals.
This is holding us up on the president's report. I just want you to know that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll look into it, no problem. Okay. So, motion on the floor is to send to DGNR with copies to the Board of Appeals and the Law Department to review prior to that meeting. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Closed. So moved. All right, our favorite part of the meeting, um, President's Report. So, we had a good budget hearing last week. I want to thank so many of those councilors that did come and were in attendance. We had a really good showing for the first. I would hope that we will have equally or comparably as good attendance at the others. As you recall, two days from now, we will have Police and Fire Department. On Monday, we're going to have the School Department, and then the following, uh, I believe it's Wednesday, I think it's the fourteenth, yes, we're going to have, we're going to have the DPW, as well as miscellaneous departments that folks would like to have in. I have not yet received any requests for any other departments to come to discuss their budget. So, if you have an interest in having a department come to discuss their budget, please just quickly shoot me an email and I'll make that happen, okay? And I'm planning on the fourteenth for the catch-all. Yes, Counselor Lopez?
Are we getting a breakdown from the School Department again, or not?
I have asked for that for Monday's meeting.
Can you ask one more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I know Counselor Leahy has requested an actual full city, full School Department budget, and that was supposed to be sent. I don't recall receiving that. There was some recent memos on some stuff that took place in Finance, so we do have the benefit of that. The next thing I wanted to mention to you is they're beginning a slow and arduous process to fix the Puleat Pool situation. A committee has been formed. They asked for a City Council representative on it. I was wondered, I have a particular interest in the pool issue, but I would also like to maybe have, serve in sort of alternative roles with somebody who might want to also be interested in the new city pool. Okay, Dave? All right, great. So, maybe between the two of us, we can break up the meetings and sort of compare notes, and then we'll work on... Oh, thank you, Dan. I appreciate that, yeah. That would be really helpful, yeah. So, the game plan is to basically demolish what most of what we effectively know as the current Puleat Pool and to rebuild it in place, and to the tune of about one-point-eight million dollars, which we have already approved. We're getting four-hundred thousand of that covered by the state. We did get a grant for a portion of it, so I thought you'd be aware of that. Other than that, I think that's the weighty stuff. We are going to have the budget votes on the twenty-first, and if necessary, the twenty-second, but hopefully we'll pull it off with just, just with the twenty-first to go through that. So, you know, this is going to be a very busy, busy month for us, so. Yeah, Brian, you might have noticed to my right, Ryan is not sitting here next to me at the meeting. He's down working the camera. Brian is still not feeling up to it post his surgery, and so we don't have our cameraman back yet. So, we are certainly, our thoughts continue to be with Brian on his speedy recovery and wishing him well. So, I know we recognized Brian at the last meeting, so certainly want to do that again on an update. Anything else, announcements or anything for the good of the order? Yes, Counselor Lebron Martinez?
I actually have a question. I, as you know, I work, I run the summer youth program, and I have some youths who at times are very talented when it comes to productions, because they've been involved in the high school, or they're participating in communications and production. And I wonder if that's something to support while Brian is out, if we needed to use one of the youth to work on this? Just a thought. It doesn't cost us anything. It's just a place for me to do a placement for the youth, so, just sharing that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and...
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah. Sure, and maybe what we could do is coordinate with Ryan and maybe do a little training where he shows them. Yeah, if it comes to that, yeah. Absolutely, thank you. That would be really, that would be great. Okay, moving right along then, to reports of committees. We begin with the Ordinance Committee. Ordinance Committee, seventeen A. "The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the Council review and amend section seven point one point six of the City's zoning ordinance regarding drive-ins, takeout restaurants, and consider amending the special permit for commercial drive-through and/or at a special permit for restaurant drive-through. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted." Councilors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two meetings on this matter, and it was to clarify and give more flexibility to our current ordinance, so that different projects coming before would have the opportunity, depending on the site, given some of the recent projects that we had. And we got feedback from planning staff and the Planning Board, and after discussion and minor amendments, the committee unanimously voted to recommend the changes. Counselor McGivern was the maker of the order. He might want to give more details.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the Chair and to the Ordinance Committee for their diligent work on what began as a very simple request to correct what I cited for two or three months ago, were some problems we were having giving out drive-through special permits for restaurants. The two problems I, you know, I issued, this now corrects them and allows for us, I think, to make more, better determinations in the future when these requests come before us. The simple request was to eliminate some language that was causing the problems, because the special permit itself is stronger than anything we do. You don't have to have a reason not to issue a special permit, you can just decline the request. But when there's criteria and bars set before we even have a hearing, it makes it very difficult to look at special circumstances on different locations where these, where these particular developments come in. What I would like to also congratulate is the Planning Board, who took the simple request, redid the entire ordinance, and I think they did a very good job at it. It took them a little bit longer than we anticipated, but we came up with a new ordinance that's both helpful to what exists, and, most important, helpful for what's coming down the road. I would just ask everyone to support this this evening.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor passing the first reading?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Seventeen B. Seventeen B is an ordinance change from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an ordinance that no elected official, department head, or city employee shall issue any order that shall knowingly violate any law or regulation of the federal, state, or local government, or the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the Charter of the City of Hoyo, or any lawful order of a court of competent jurisdiction. No such order given shall be valid or shall be enforced by the City of Hoyo or its departments. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Councilors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
This is pretty straightforward. I mean, we all take an oath when we're elected to office, and this is just really simply reinforcing that.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? All in favor passing the first reading?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second. Motion, the motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. When your name is called, a yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it. The clerk will call a roll, a yes vote. Oh, I've already described that. So, the clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Item number seventeen C. Item number seventeen is a report from the Committee on Ordinance relative to parking fees, but there's only two signatures currently on the committee report.
Can we send it back?
You want to send it back to committee for more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's possible.
We got some additional testimony.
Yeah. I just want to get the right information from Springfield, Northampton, and all the city. I think the information that we receive wasn't the right one.
Okay. And, yes, Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, when we adopted the original ordinance many years ago, the Chamber of Commerce was involved being saw that they elicited input from people throughout the downtown, people who work in own businesses throughout the downtown area. I would ask that they be reached out to and see if we can get some updated information from them.
Yeah, and I think maybe at the next one, we could have the city auditor in. He's the one that prepared the recent report about the needs and the four-hundred thousand shortfall, and maybe we could also get some information about the new deck and how much does it really cost, and then get impact from the business owners to see, you know, strike a balance somewhere in here with everybody.
And the revenue from the parking meters is important, too, because it's a connected plan.
Absolutely. It all works in hand in hand. Yes, Counselor President.
Can we also maybe bring in the Dan Overton, I think it was?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, just get his feedback and what tools he might need to better do what he does.
dwellers that are on High Street, too, that live in the apartment buildings. Just want to be cognizant of them as well. Would have to face...
Maybe you could help us on how to get the word out. Maybe they could send, the landlord could send a notice out or something.
I agree.
Counselor Bartley?
So just along those lines, I think those are all great ideas by Joe and Dan and Nelson, but I wanted to add also that...
Oh, Kevin.
There's one counselor here that he's absent today, but boy, if you don't mention him...
No, I'm only kidding.
Counselor Leahy, I just an abstent, John, always does a great job with this. God forbid if we forget him. But I do, and Kevin, Uncle Kevin.
Thank you, thank you.
So I did want to point out that it would be, I think, helpful to have the vendor who is responsible for...
Oh, that's a good call.
Well, I don't know who the new vendor's going to be, because the mayor was here the other night.
Sounded like they're on their way out the door.
Sounds like they're being railroaded out or moved out, but whatever. But we've got to get some kind of understanding. It's, we've got all these broken meter heads.
Yep.
And poles without meter heads. I did also want to point out, Mr. President, some news I got, and this is in the parking ordinance, and let me just get the exact number, because I know you'd be interested. So when I read the parking ordinance, I reflect upon the excellent order that we passed five years ago now for the special event fee for the St. Patrick's Day weekend. And this year's...
I mean, who came up with that idea?
Ah, that's the Ward Three counselor, but without me, anonymous. This year's take was $3,845, which is consistent with the other four years. So I mean, it's, it just, every little bit helps.
I pay for a city councilor after taxes. I mean, that's, you can't get a better ROI on than that.
Yeah, how does it get down to city council, and finally priceless? So that's what the city councils are...
We better move this along.
Although, some of the audience tonight were ready to fire us all in public comment, but that's okay.
Hopefully, they appreciate our humor as much as we do.
No sense of humor out there.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Thank you.
Always eloquent. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is staying in committee, but I just wanted to point out that in discussion, we had considered the fact that the garage fee should be lower than the street meter fee. And my notes indicate we had amended that from a dollar down to 75 cents, just for future discussion when we take it up again.
The other thing I would point out is, we have a $1.3 million deficit in the projected budget as we speak, and the mayor was encouraging this proposal to make up $450,000 of that shortfall. So whatever we do, it would be helpful if we could decide as a group what we're going to do, if we're going to do anything, this month before we start July. So maybe if this could go on the next agenda for ordinance, perhaps, Madam Chair, and we could bring the...
Kevin?
The appropriate parties in, so we could have a discussion some point before the end of the month. Yes, Counselor LeBron Martinez?
Yeah, I know that this is going back to committee in regards to the garage increase, and I did get several calls and individuals concerned about the fees going up for those who really come here and work in the city. Because as you know, there's an order from me, from the residents already, who live near Lyman Street with the limits parking that they're facing right now, and it has been an issue even before now. And I think we should look creatively to try to strike a deal, because I know, for example, the gentleman, Michael, who spoke earlier, he pays their employees for their parking. He pays that fee. And maybe if we keep it at a low cost and doing more outreach to the business community that, you know, have a business, like a big employee in their site to support them somehow, so we can really bring the revenue in that parking, at the same time keeping it low so that they can, you know, could be affordable. So with that, just sharing what they told me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any other thoughts? Okay. So under the rules, as we know, failure to have three signatures, the item remains in committee, so there will not be a vote necessary to do that. So seventeen C remains in the ordinance committee. That now moves us to item number seventeen D. Item number seventeen D is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the DPW install a no parking sign for loading in front of 27 Olive Street to allow the bodega on Dwight and Olive, a place to have deliveries to its store. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
This was a proposal brought forth just to improve the ability to do business and have deliveries at this particular site.
Okay. Counselor Bresnahan, do you want to add anything to that? I know you were the author of this. Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it. The clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Item number seventeen E is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the DPW put up a sign on the existing corner sign approximately 15 yards away from the corner of Cherry and Dale on the even side. The sign shall read "No Overnight Parking, 9 to 7." Have considered the same, recommend that this ordinance be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the report and pass the first reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
This matter seems to be some of the spillover parking that we addressed by putting up some other no parking signs on Dale in the past. It's hoped that once the permitting process occurs over at Bowden Village that this may be relieved, but for the time being, it was felt to be the right move for the residents.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it. The clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Seventeen H, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the Ordinance Committee review Section 1835, Regulation of Blighted and Vacant Buildings. Consider revising the appeal process for vacant building registration and applicable fees. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Just one second. We're going to do that jointly. I'm going to read seventeen G now.
Oh, sorry.
Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the city council consider amending 1835 with respect to vacant building fee charge, in that we consider suspending the fee if the owner has an open and valid building permit on said vacant property and work is actively taking place. Also, if a new owner purchases a vacant property, the vacant permit charge starts at the year, at year one for the new owner. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Both of these come recommended by Counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee reports and to pass their first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I think the simplest way to speak about this revision is that we had good intentions in trying to improve our community with the blighted and vacant properties, but we also had some unintended consequences that were actually sort of impeding people who wanted to purchase them and fix them up, or in the case of some inherited properties, not giving people a chance to manage that process. So the committee did a good amount of work, and I want to thank the committee for their debate and discussion on this and modified it in a way that I think it is now a win-win. We are still going to be diligent on not letting vacant properties sit there and deteriorate, but on the other hand, if somebody's buying it to fix it up, we're not going to be subjecting them to fees at the same time that they're paying for permits and work to improve the structure. Thank you. I don't know if the maker of the order wants to speak or not.
Yeah, we covered it in committee, right?
You guys did a great job.
Thank you. Okay, there being no further discussion. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it. The clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved those ordinance changes. Seventeen H, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order regarding a special permit application for methadone and suboxone clinics coming into the city. There's no signatures on this committee jacket, so this remaining in committee?
Correct.
Okay. Just for the record, I'm abstaining on that matter, as I've continued to. There will be no discussion or debate on that. It still remains in the ordinance committee under the rule. Okay. Seventeen I, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the DPW superintendent and police chief come to the ordinance committee to discuss the prevention ordinance relative to panhandling at the following locations by creating or erecting barriers for panhandlers to freely along roadside, soliciting money interfering with the traffic flow. Intersections to be reviewed handed in Northampton, Dwight and Northampton, Main at 391, 391 Main Street exit, 391 and High, Maple and Resnick Boulevard, Whiting Farms Road Mall entrance. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted for the DPW to begin a pilot implementation of two to three intersections. I believe that was the recommendation of the DPW. That was approved by Counselors Bacon, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
I think this is pretty straightforward. We've had many discussions on this complex issue. It's a challenge to balance all the interests of the parties involved. So the best recommendations that have come forth so far for consideration included this recent one. And so rather than go into a full solution mode because we're not sure that it even is, it was best thought by the committee, and I think we're all in agreement on that, that it was better to try one of two or three approaches that were put forth to see how it would work and what effect it would have before we jump to a conclusion that it would be the best thing to do.
Thank you. Counselor Roman?
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, I know we had this exhaustive conversation, so I won't beat a dead horse. I won't be voting in favor of this this evening, but I would like to, if I could, Mr. President, just offer an amendment, just purely for informational purposes. I want to know the cost, if I could, through the makers, if we could just add a provision that the DPW provide a cost of what these islands will cost. And the reason why I ask that is, again, as a counselor, I stated this in committee, for spending money on creating these physical barriers, that's money that could go to street paving or sidewalk repairs. So I want to know how much these pilot programs are going to cost us per pilot. So it's purely informational. I would offer that as an amendment. I hope someone will second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right, so an amendment has been made by Counselor Roman, seconded by Counselor Bartley, that amending the committee report to request that the DPW provide us with information related to the cost associated with doing the pilot of two to three intersections. All in, any further discussion of that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. So the committee report is now amended with that added language. Anything else, Counselor Roman, or you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, Counselor Bartley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had a very good discussion. I really want to thank the maker of the order for this. I'm just going to, I think Nelson just had a really great amendment. That was why I recommended, and I'm glad the committee adopted, in committee that we kind of trimmed down the number of these, because I, you know, I think there are seven, so we've got two or three. Mr. McManus from DPW, Mr. President, he was nodding his head affirmatively that, yeah, we need to take a look. I don't think any of us think that this is going to, I mean, well, I don't want to say I should, let me strike that. If this has an effect, in my opinion, it'll be a limited, limited one. But I do want to just make one brief comment. I'm just getting a little tired of either folks coming to the microphone, or worse, even counselors, just talking over one another. It's so darn frustrating when one counselor or one person makes a comment, and then that comment is completely disregarded, and we just move on, zoom on to our own, to our own opinion. And we heard it tonight from the microphone. When a person comes up to our microphone, you city counselors, how dare you? How dare you? You're so judgmental about panhandlers. And these are, well, you're darn right, we know their people. We darn right, we know who they are. We see them every darn day. And by the way, if the person that came to the microphone had the courage to come to a committee meeting or watch on TV, that person would have seen the chief of police come in, Mr. President, say, we went to these folks on the street corners, panhandlers, and we asked them. We offered help. We offered help, and we did it as a crisis prevention team. In fact, we had the chief of police and Captain Feeble at the Ward Three meeting last Tuesday reiterate the exact same thing. And the people couldn't believe, oh, you mean, Mr. Chief? All of them accepted the help? No, dear constituent, one. Out of all the persons we asked, one accepted help. So help is being offered. If it's not accepted, what is it that you want from us, dear public? We're doing our best, but you got the gall to come up to our microphone, get your big applause ring, yell at the city counselors, we're doing what we can, and we have to sit here and take it? Well, I'm not going to take it. And that's why I'm speaking out right now. So if you want to get yourself educated, come to the darn meetings like we do, which, by the way, there are a lot of them, or watch them on TV. Get yourself informed, and then we can have an honest conversation instead of speaking past one another. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley. Any other thoughts, comments? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, well, I guess we know who this is about right here. We, we've, I can't support anything to do with barriers, spending any kind of taxpayers' money on this kind of stuff. I'm going to go back to what my original position is. It's the public, any money we spend from here on out, it's got to be to educate the public. Not on barriers, not on fences, bushes, or anything else, to educate the public. Now, to elaborate on what Counselor Bartley is saying here, if you take some of the people I had to listen to tonight, right, maybe a little education on their part, right, might have prevented some of this. Now, maybe they're not watching, coming to some of the other committee meetings and stuff, too, but let's spend some time and some money getting the word out. Spend the money there, getting the word out. Today, a panhandler was interviewed. They wanted to know what the panhandler thought of what I said about him. Well, I'm going to tell you about this panhandler that was interviewed. He's been arrested twice, once in 2014 and 2016 for possession of Class A for heroin. Now, he is standing on a traffic island in front of a shopping plaza on Northampton and Homestead. It'd be nice to interview some of the store owners inside of there. I don't think it was spent on food to survive, okay? And I'm just going to say, I've got to be careful what I say. The public may as well give the money directly to the drug dealer, because that's where it went. I'm done.
Any other thoughts?
Thank you.
Councilor President?
I agree, I agree with the sentiment of both my colleagues. I'm, I'm not a fan of spending tax money, tax dollars money on, you know, we need sidewalks fixed, we need road fixed, all that. You know, I was, I thought the meeting went well. It was, it is a very tough topic. I mean, this is all over, this is on, this is on the radio stations, this topic of discussion, it was on the ra, I was interviewed on a radio station about the order that this is Jimmy Leahy filed about the panhandling, about the DEA coming in. We're having the DEA or representative hopefully come in on the 15th of this month to talk about, you know, what exactly is this panhandling? Is it bigger, is it more, is there more going on than we are aware of? But it is an issue. I mean, oftentimes, I'll be, I'll be at a stop sign or a red light, and I'll see the poor soul looking for money, and their eyes are closed, and they could be nodding off from, you know, whatever they may ingest it, or maybe they're just tired from standing on their feet all day. I don't know. But God forbid, one of them fall into the street when someone's driving by because they're incapacitated, or they're just tired from standing in the sun. I don't know. But I also am, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of comments that go on in this, in this, in these chambers, and good, bad, indifferent, right or wrong. It's the freedom of speech. And this is America, this is a democracy, this is, you know, the U.S. Constitution, the First Amendment gives everyone the freedom of speech to say what you want. I disagree with many things said. People talk about, you know, who they are, what they stand for. I may or may not agree with it. I heard com, you know, some, some counselors, through their own, through their own words, have said that they were once in these situations. I don't come up here to talk about my personal past, my personal experiences, you know, my lifestyle, my religion, what I believe in. I don't do that, because that's not the, this is not my platform. I'm here to represent the city of Hoyoke. But I just, I just publicly want to say that, you know, every city counselor has the right and the freedom of speech to say what they want to. It is guarded and protected by the U.S. Constitution, and I will stand by that until I stand no longer. And again, I disagree with many things, whether I agree with what Counselor Sullivan or anyone else says in this room. He's got the god-darn right to say it in these chambers or anywhere he feels like it, because that's what the U.S. Constitution allows him to do, and that's why America is great.
Right. Your hear.
Mr. President, I just want to speak in favor of my order, and also I'm going to ask any counselor to put forward any proposal to see how we're going to handle this problem. I know I put another one, item number 27. This is not an easy one. And I've been reading, I've been reading about this issue, Oklahoma City, Canada, and I mean, you can find it. It's a big issue. I think my order number 27 is a copy, is a copy from Oklahoma City. I'm not going to lie, it's not my idea. So hopefully that will work, and we don't have to spend any money. So, and I will provide you with more newspaper clipping and all that information at the committee level. Thank you.
Councilor Roman?
Yes, thank you. I just, again, I agree. I think we've debated this exhaust, and I would like to rise and support. And I think that was a great conversation that came out from the public, and it was a public member who actually first brought up the fee and the, not the fee, the permitting for solicitations, because I think across the board, whether you're going to be out there with a boot, or you're going to be out there with your hand asking for money, you should have a permit, because what if that person falls in the middle of the road and something happens? And as some of my colleagues eloquently so put it, this is the right of any individual to speak. And I spoke with my colleague outside of the chambers previously at the previous meeting, and again, I have the full and most respect for everyone in this body. We have to, as a community and as a people, talk about this in terms of really truly getting at the root. And I read that same article that was referenced this evening, and at no point did I read that individual's criminal record in the past. And so for me, to even bring that up, or find out, or dig deep, who doesn't have a past or a history? So I just feel that that's sad, that we have to get to that level to shame this person who, for whatever their context was, to try to diminutize their past. I find offense to that, and you're right. This is the First Amendment, and this is the America, so I have a right to speak on behalf of all citizens, the citizens that are on the street, behind the tents, under the road, under the bridge. And the biggest deterrent of any crime, any drug use, is jobs, increase in reducing of recidivism, and that's why it goes hand in hand with things like ban the box, with really taking and tackling, and there's other proposals that I cofiled with Counselor Lisi, on exactly like other communities have done, creating environments where exactly what my colleague is saying, you could donate to a fund that allows these people to help with beautification projects, getting them tangible jobs. But I too went and did my research, and I talked to the individuals down underneath 391 Underpass. They don't have valid documents.
Through the chair.
Through the chair, sorry. They don't have valid documents. So in order to get your birth certificate in the state of Massachusetts, you need something with your social security number and your ID on it. If you don't have any documentation, that's impossible, Mr. President. That's impossible. To get your social security card, you need a birth certificate. That's impossible. So to truly, and again, whatever anyone's vices are, and yes, individuals, and we've heard from the chief, you might offer some help and support. I agree with some tangible, concrete offers, and that's why I'm not, I am voting no on the specific creating of shrubbery, because I think the money should be spent elsewhere. But I think that if we start tackling and talking about things in the context with respect, and not us versus them or pointing, or like I said, shaming, because yeah, you might have done the time. Who knows, or who says that he hasn't done those two crimes and hasn't learned from his lessons? We don't know. We didn't ask him. That wasn't in the article. At no point did they say, "Hey, we've done the research on you, here's your criminal record, what's your response to this?" And for us to bring that out to light, it's one, and this is what I'm saying, and I know I've talked to a few of my colleagues, and I've talked to you directly, Mr. President, there's a few who are making it bad for the rest. And yes, I do bring up the context of me being a homeless individual, because it's a lot more prevalent than we think, and not every homeless person is out there begging or asking for money. I want to make that clear as well. We've talked about that. But I just want to have more of a humanistic dialogue, a more respectful dialogue when we're talking about these things. So I will not be supporting this. I do agree with Counselor Lopez's order of starting to create, I agree with creating a permit. I don't think we should charge. I think whoever you are, if you're soliciting, whether it's a church group trying to sell the candy bars or the candy canes I see on the streets sometimes walking around, or whether you're out there with a boot, or you're out there with your hand. And yes, I do agree, we need to educate the public on donating to organizations like Providence Ministries, Kate's Kitchen, anywhere that's going to help individuals get out of that. But I just wanted to rise to say those things, Mr. Chairman. And again, hopefully we could push some of these other tangible solutions.
Councilor McGee?
Just touching quickly on the, on the cost aspect, to, through you to the chair, did we get a rough estimate as to what this would be? And it's, I'm just reading, it says two to three intersections based on the limit of seven that we had. So we're going to, whatever we build, it's going to cost X, we're going to put in two sec, two or three sections, the other five remain. Do what, and then we move those there, and then...
Right, so, so let's, yeah, just, let's just clarify that point. So first of all, obviously, these seven were identified as a high areas. So what the DPW superintendent said is, with his existing budget, he would like to take an approach of two or three of these, to some do shrubbery, some to perhaps a, you know, decorative barrier, something of that nature on a couple of these intersections, to see if that has an impact. And then sit back, evaluate that, see if it made a difference, and then from that, we extrapolate, should we do more of it? That didn't work, we try something else. It's, you know, again, there's no silver bullet here for any of these solutions. It's this in tandem with, you know, you had, you had the range, everything from, you know, people think we should go around with a van offering people jobs, apparently with the city, maybe as well to all these individuals, to taxi rides, to programs, to, you know, you name it. So we'll, we'll, we'll see what it, what it is. But this is the one, one solution that the DPW superintendent felt that he could tackle at a couple of these, because the point is, there was a discussion about sidewalks and right of use of sidewalk, which I believe, based on my current reading of the law, is protected as a matter of freedom of speech, if you're going to stand there with a sign. Question is, are medians sidewalks? I tend to think not. I tend to think people that are traversing inside the, the traffic amongst cars are creating a public nuisance. And the question is, can you stand on an area? Are medians designed for public to stand on them all day long and solicit? And so the question became, what can we do to create physical barriers such that people don't go there? Like, for example, we don't want people walking off bridges, so we have guards on the side of bridges, right? It's the same thing. If you don't want people to stand on medians, you put up a small fence so people don't stand on the median.
I got, I got my answer.
They're content neutral, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other thoughts, comments, discussion, concerns? Counselor Bacon?
I just want to comment briefly that there is not perceived that there would be any need for an appropriation for this pilot, and we have been discussing for two years this matter. I think I filed the order to create a permit for soliciting money at least two years ago. So far, we've done nothing. And I think we should do something and see how it works. And if it's a bad idea, we don't have to keep doing it. And if it's a good idea, we can do more of it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I think we've had an opportunity to examine the issue, share our thoughts and concerns, and I think we're prepared. Unless I see a hand go up, we're going to take a vote. All right? So the item, the current committee report is to allow the DPW to implement some pilot strategies at these two or three intersections, based on what the superintendent recommended at the committee. There was an amendment that was approved here that the DPW tells us how much that will cost, if anything. And we'll take it from there, okay? So without further discussion, all in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, show of hands, all in favor of adopting the committee report? Six. So that's, what do we got, 11 in the room here? One, two.
Eleven, yeah.
Three, four. So it looks like that carries. Okay. Six to five. Adopted. And that closes out the ordinance section of the meeting. We now brings this to the finance section of the meeting.
Mr. President, can we take up, if you guys want, just to make, not too long, 18A, 18C, and 18E as a package? They're all...
Second.
...belated?
Second. Okay.
I can explain if you don't want to, I understand, but...
Let's, E. So are those all additional appropriations from the general fund or free cash?
Two are, two are from the charter. One is free cash. But they're for unemployment, they're both, they're both for the school, in essence, unemployment and the transportation. That's why I say bring up a package.
But the charter one is, these are from the...
Charter assessment money.
Which is in the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a, that's a interesting way to describe it, but it's an additional appropriation from the charter school for unemployment, charter school for transportation. I myself would prefer to take these separately.
Okay, that, I've just offered up. So we take them up.
Some may have a different view of unemployment versus transportation versus something else. So, okay. All right, so 18A, the committee on finance to whom is referred a financial transfer request, the amount of $300,000 from the general fund charter school assessment to unemployment. Have considered the same, recommend it be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tom, and Bacon, and Lopez.
Make a motion to receive and adopt, pass first reading.
Second. Motion is permitted, seconded to receive and adopt and pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGee?
Yes. What this represents is, when we're doing the budget in the cherry sheet, you will see general allocation of monies for, for the school department, of which in there is the charter school assessment, which is the amount of money that we estimate we'll need to help fund the charter schools. This year, they estimated from the state that it would be roughly about $12 million, of which after watching it over a period of time, we weren't going to use all that assessed portion. So therefore, Anthony Soto, when doing the review of it, called Bellamy and said, "What do you think? Will there be excess left over?" There was the 300 plus the 321, which is 18E, were the excess amounts for the charter school assessment. So they're looking to take that money to then pay for these expenses. One is unemployment, which is 18A. 18E would be to cover the transportation costs. With regards to this, if the money wasn't used, it would be in the general fund, it would come back over to us to be used. So that is the pro and con to it. If this money was fully used by the charter schools, they would still be short $632, $621,000 to cover these expenses, which we do not have in free cash, just to be clear.
Can you, can you delete my name from this order, please? I don't want to sign on this.
Yeah, deleting Counselor Lopez as a cosponsor of this. And let's just be clear, right, Mr. Chairman, that we allocated at the budget $63.9 million. This, as well as these others, are all increases to that amount coming from the general fund. So that in addition to the extra $8 million that we gave, we're asked to now give an additional 300, 400, 321, an additional $1,021,000 in addition to the extra $8 million that we already gave, which is greater than the $10 million that we've given as our minimum requirement. So we're being asked to give additional subsidy of the general fund, that's police, fire, sidewalks, and all of this to underwrite these additional costs in the school department.
Yeah, with regard, the unemployment, we had a lengthy discussion on that as to the number that we're collecting, and those that didn't return, and spreadsheet that everyone did receive with regards to why the number got to where it is. With regards to the transportation costs, I will remind everybody, when we were doing the budget, we did cut the school department with regards to rents for Suffolk Street as well as Halo, which we have addressed. At that time, the superintendent, Dr. Dreig, did stress that the transportation budget would be underfunded. He said by $800,000. So he let it known right up front, it is not contracted correctly. Since then, they have set up a committee in order to try and address the spending with regards to the busing. And as we learned in that meeting, as well as I'm on that, on that committee, with regards to the special education busing, it's like $9 million, of which they are trying to grasp how to deal with that number, which is different start times, redoing the contracts for the different types of budget, busing companies, which would be bid contracts. So we are in the process of trying to deal with that number. But I'll be very clear, the superintendent said at the time, you know, when they did this contract, they did it wrong, and he forecasted $800,000 as a shortfall. It has dwindled down a bit, but, you know, not a lot. It's 721.
And the dilemma, of course, is we give it to them now, this is operating expenses. This isn't like, this is a capital need that, you know, the boiler went, or, you know, these are one-time, these are structural deficits in addition to what we're traditionally giving. If you give an extra million, they need that permanently. And so I'm unwilling to make that level of commitment here this evening, to give them an extra $1 million a year in perpetuity, because I don't think it's a fair commitment, because we don't have an extra million in the, in the general fund to give it to them. Okay, that's, on that, Counselor McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You and I have talked about this both in committee and about the situation with the schools and what's happening before us. And as we all know, we're trying to balance a budget at the end of the year and put together a budget for the beginning of the year. And oftentimes, it conflicts, and oftentimes, it's redundant in terms of what we're trying to do. At the first hearing last week, I asked a series of questions to try to better understand the charter school dollars themselves. And it's still not 100% clear to me, but I see it not as general fund direct monies, because there is no appropriation other than the acceptance of the charter school monies, which is a pass-through, which goes, you know, the formula brings first the dollars to the public school students who go to the charter school, and then the reimbursement dollars to the public schools, based on the formula that is never 100%, funded as we know, but that the public schools receive and return. This year, very unusual, they identified a surplus and believe they can use that surplus for school use. It's, you know, they identified it, as, as the chairman of finance pointed out, Counselor McGee, you know, with the help of, with our, with our acting city auditor and our new city auditor, and the new, I call Anthony Soto, the finance director or comptroll director for, for the schools. It's necessary to pay unemployment, because we don't get out of it. It's, I said directly to Dr. Dreig, "I'm very disappointed with this unemployment figure," after two years of attempts to avoid this type of unnecessary expense, because it's not positions that have been eliminated due to budget deficiencies. It's teachers and administrators who have been laid off for other reasons. And be that the receivership's reasons, we have very little to say over that, but it generates, because we are self-employed, self-insured, the unemployment insurance is a cost right now on the city side of the budget, and does become part of net school spending. But the, the difference I do recognize, but I've been promised, and you heard our new auditor, Joshua, say last, last Thursday, that he has already started meeting with Anthony at the schools to figure this out and to have a better handle on it. Because when we, when we met, we were told point-blank by Jay Sullivan from the state, that our auditor should have full knowledge of these dollars, of what's passed through the, through the, through the schools, what is used through the schools. And we learned, or were reminded, that under ed reform, schools can carry dollars over to next year, unlike any other department within, within our municipality or any municipality. That makes it very difficult for us. We've never taken on the challenge of the schools, because the school committee has already done it on a line item control, but it makes it very difficult for us to, to understand it. But in order to, to balance and to meet this obligation, they have identified the charter school dollars, they've identified and told us that they are surplus, this doubt, a unique surplus of dollars this year and available for use. Therefore, I would ask everyone to consider that, because the unemployment has to be paid one way or the other, and we can't just ignore it.
Just point, I would like one, a couple points. One is, you're absolutely right in everything you just said. The only thing I would point out is, when you lay an employee off, or you terminate an employee, their salary that you were funding them remains in the budget. You should be paying the unemployment out of the salary that you had budgeted for these positions that you are no longer filling.
That's the point.
The problem is, what they're doing is, they're, they're either, they're backfilling the positions, or, so that's, so that's a management mistake. Can't backfill jobs if you're laying them off, at least not 100%. You could do 50%. Or, the second, the second thing is, you can't reallocate the funds to other purposes, and then say, "Oh, I've got a shortfall." The bottom line is, the city council is giving a very generous $63.9 million appropriation. These extras, that from time to time, it just works out that we don't get this charter money, comes in a little better than what we thought, we're giving them the va- money, comes in a little better than what we thought, we're giving them the vast bulk of the charter, but these dollars go to augment so many of the other costs that we have. Like, for example, we don't count all the bonds. Who has to pay the Hoyok High School school bond, right? 80% is paid by the state, but 20% has to be paid by us. That doesn't get counted in the 63.9 million. You know, all those costs of other operations have to come from somewhere. And it just doesn't, it seems like what they do is, they lay people off, they backfill them to the max, and then they say, "City Council, we're short. Send us another $1 million." Counselor Bartley, you had your hand up. Oh, you didn't. I apologize. Counselor Bacon.
I only want to make a couple of brief comments. My perception about the charter school money and the ability to transfer it was pretty much that that's kind of a one-time thing. So that, that money that we have sitting there right now to transfer is not going to be a recurring thing in the next year.
Why not?
Because the likelihood that they will underestimate how many people are going out to the charters to the degree that it was underestimated this year is small. So I just, right, right. But I just want to say that I don't think that's going to be recurring. The thing that I learned is that in the past, to the extent that they were over in their estimate, that money was just going into the general fund, but we were never really aware of how much, if any, had ever been left that was going into the general fund. And so that is where we were under-informed as a city council as to what was happening with that money on the cherry sheet. So that was an important thing, and the assistant director at the state level said, "We should always know that at all times." That, so that was one point. And the other point on the transportation, because I share the opinion that we should not be subsidizing structural deficits in a budget, is on the transportation point. So they did an analysis. They sort of focused on the wrong things. Then they got the focus on the right thing. The bottom line is, they have to make some very difficult decisions that are not going to be liked by the people that are going to be affected by them. Nonetheless, we made it pretty clear, I feel, as a committee, that we're not going to have the money in the city to do this next year. So whatever problem they identified and whatever low-hanging fruit they found that they can fix, they're going to need to fix, because we're already looking at, what, projected $2 million free cash, $1.3 million deficit, you know, for next year. So I think we were all pretty clear at the table on that, that whatever they found to do, they have to do it. And that there was disappointment expressed in terms of what hadn't been done. I mean, they've come in as the receivers because the local people couldn't do it right. So, you know, they need to start fixing the things that we couldn't fix. And so I'm just viewing it as this is one transition time, and next year, should I be here to be talking about it again? I wouldn't do this in the future, because they have now to fix it. That's just my take. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Bacon. And this is something that's unusual to happen to have this money there. And I think they were fortunate to find this money, I think, halfway through the year with the auditor and the acting auditor and with the school department comptroller. This isn't something that's going to happen every year. And I understand your point, too. This is money that we got to take, that should be in the general fund, that now we're losing out on. But the bill's got to be paid. The busing's got to be paid. We knew that. And the unemployment's got to be paid. And my question was, what would happen if this money wasn't there? You know, how's it going to get paid? They'd have to find another way. They'd have to make some serious cuts within their budget. So I think this is an unusual thing. I think this was a learning process for all of us at the committee meeting, that we have to have their comptroller and our auditors working together to see these things as the years go on. Because as Counselor Bacon stated, the money that was rolled over the last several years from the school department to the general fund, we didn't really know. It could have been a half a million. It could have been a million dollars that was rolled over into our general fund over the years that just wasn't, we weren't aware of. But it's money that does go back into the general fund.
I just would want to point out, though, we give them $63.9 million. What the, we shouldn't get distracted by the source of the revenue, but the source of where it's going to end up if we approve this transfer. Where would they get the money for transportation? Where would they get the money for unemployment? They have a budget. They have to manage the budget. You can't be hoping that the city is going to bail you out every year. And what has changed? What's new about this year versus the last six or eight years when they can't manage their budget? That's why they're in receivership among the academic issues. The fact of the matter is, if we give them more than 63.9 this year, they're going to need more than 63.9 next year. They've already asked for a $200,000 increase. And that means they're going to need another million or more, whatever. They don't have, based on the way they're running it, enough. They're structurally short by a million. So cut it now. Just cut the million now. Why fund it and say, kick the can down the road for another year and say, "Well, maybe we'll come up with some pot of money next year to fund it." The fact of the matter is, those are dollars that would have went into the general fund, right? So Counselor Lopez.
I just want to get the budget completely before even considering any of these three items. I will not vote for them unless I get the whole budget. I want to see where we're going. And
They haven't produced that.
And they have to produce it if they want me to consider even voting for any of the three items tonight. So we either table, or at least you run the chances of not having the support tonight, I guess.
Counselor McGivern.
You know, you pointed out that, you know, they backfill the positions. That was clear. And layoff is a nice word for what is happening in the schools. And we're not, unfortunately, not our purview to get in and intervene on behalf of some wonderful teachers that have been wrongfully treated. Now, when the receivership came in, they said, "They're going to fix the problem in Hoyok, and they're going to fix it with the same amount of money." We can leave it right there. I think they're starting to recognize that. These transportation costs are crazy. And it's out of control. It's about homeless, which is
How can we continue to underwrite that?
You know, we're
State, step up.
We got people, we could go on forever. I think we understand it. But we don't know if these dollars went back to the general fund, if there ever were any dollars from charter school reimbursement, because that still doesn't make sense. Because this is dollars coming in and allocated only through the cherry sheet. You know, whether they're part, they're not part of the chapter $70 total in terms of what's going to be spent on the public schools. It's what's going to be spent on a public school eligible charter school student now. And the formula to help out the public schools, because it does cause a financial burden to public schools when a student leaves for a charter school. Because we cannot reduce, we can reduce the size of a class in terms of students, but the class of the class is the same in terms of teachers, in terms of expenses to have the school open. You don't, you don't reduce the expense in a school because kids go to charter school. In some cases, you increase the cost of public schools with kids going to charter schools. And we know, the state formula gives charter schools more per kid than we do the public schools. So it's, you know, I mean, I don't want to say it's a joke, but it's sad. I think we have a chance, because we learned through Jay Sullivan is, is this side of the budget, this, the city side, let us down. To find this out in June is wrong. You know, we should have known unemployment costs. We have a human resource department. We have a department and auditor. We have a treasurer. We have money that's being, you know, month after month after month, going out the door, and there's not enough money in the line item to pay for it. Todd pointed out, Dr. Zrye told the mayor, told us last year, he did not have enough money for transportation under the circumstances of what they're facing. Even with every effort they made, and they're already going to continue to make to change transportation costs, they did not have enough money. And foreseeing this, where the rest of the money went, I think, you know, I agree with the Estado, except I think we got to finish up the year and start next year fresh, is next Monday, we need to hold the school, the school department to the fire and say, "Are you going to live within your budget?" And find out what the true budget is, which we haven't done for 40 years. You know, the school committee couldn't find out what the true budget was. But unemployment, this isn't, if we don't pass monies to pay unemployment, that's already been spent. It doesn't go away. Transportation costs, if we don't find monies to pay for transportation, that's already been spent. It doesn't go away. Those are expenses that should have been accounted for. We should have been discussing this four or five months ago, and to be able to make adjustments before the end of the year. We now have three weeks left to do this, or it's going to come from somewhere. And then it'll really come from the general budget. And then that'll be more unemployment cost, because we'll be laying off people to pay for this.
And of course, this would have all went to free cash for next year, had we not had to make these transfers.
The charter school, we're not 100% sure.
Sure.
I think they rolled it over.
It's additional revenue.
I understand, but I think they rolled it over. Remember how we used to talk about, you know, that rollover bit since education reform? We never got a full good handle on it from the auditors.
All right. Has everybody had an opportunity to say what they would like on this issue? So we're going to get to taking some votes here to move us forward, one way or the other. Barring any other motions, the motion on the floor is currently to pass the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second. Okay, motions were made and seconded to pass the second reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of a $300,000 transfer from the general funds charter school assessment to unemployment, unemployment for the school department.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Brezneren?
No.
Jordane?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
No.
Seven yeas, four nays.
On your vote, motion is defeated. 18B. 18B is a transfer request, committee report from the committee on finance to whom was referred, a financial transfer, $37,500 from short-term interest, library financial manager, library night assistant, motor equipment operator to Halo rent for the school department. Have considered the same. Recommend that this be denied. It says on the agenda, I think, approved, but I believe there's a scratch through, and the finance committee, I believe, denied it, correct?
Correct.
It's denied. Okay. Just so for folks watching at home, the agenda says approved, but the committee report says denied. And that was signed off by counselors McGee, Tom, and Bacon and Lopez.
We may motion receive, adopt, and
Just to adopt the committee report, pass the first reading.
Pass to deny, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep. With regards to this, real quick, the superintendent came in and said that they will work with Hoyok Community College to readdress the rent and everything else, so they don't no longer need this. As we all know, in financial transfers, you can't give it, leave, withdraw. You have to either vote for it or deny it. So it's denied because they no longer need it.
Yep. That's exactly right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report, pass the first reading. I oppose, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to adopt the committee report, which is to deny. So just a friendly reminder on that. A yes vote is actually denying the money. A no vote is to approve the money. Clerk will call the roll, please.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
On your vote, you have denied that transfer request and approved the finance committee recommendation.
Can we take up D, F, and G as a package?
Okay. Motion on the floor is to take up 18D.
F.
Are we going to do C and E?
We're going to table C until Monday. Well, that's why I was going to get rid of the grants first, too. Then we can go back to that, because that's going to be more of a
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
I'm trying to let people go home at night, relatively.
So the chairman recommends that we suspend the rules to take up 18D, F, and G as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved to D, F, G. So I'm just going to briefly go through these for the benefit of all involved. 18D, committee on finance to whom was referred in order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4453A, city council hereby accept the provisions of the pedestrian bicycle safety enforcement and equipment grant. 18F, same preamble, that the city council hereby accept the provisions of the underage alcohol enforcement grant. 18G, the committee on finance, also same preamble, accept the provisions of the sustained traffic enforcement program grant. All three are recommended for adoption by the finance committee, to wit, counselors McGee, Tom, and Bacon and Lopez.
So motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt and to pass the first reading to approve these three grants. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, with the bicycle grant, we received one in 2015 for $5,000. We're receiving it again. Two years later, it's now down to $3,750. With regards to the underage enforcement, once again in 2015, we received a grant for $10,000. It's now down to $4,000, almost $5,000. And then with the, this is the big hit, the traffic enforcement, we received last year for $75,000. They thought they were going to get 67. We only received $17,550.
That was huge.
So our grants are diminishing. In order to tackle these type of issues, with the bicycle grant, it's getting them back on the bike and doing enforcement of issues. They'll do that, based on this amount of money, they'll do that from now until September 30th, 13 times between that timeframe. So they'll stagger it out there. They won't give you the times. And they'll do that for the other two grants as well. The real hit was that traffic enforcement one. They took that on last year at the high-traffic areas like Homestead and Bemis. Peter and I were just talking about this. Bemis, they've done a series of targeting. 926 cars per day go through Bemis, of which they issued nine citations and seven warnings. So one of the highest speeds that they clocked was 45. It's from 15 to 30 to 15, and someone's doing 45 through that area. So we have problems.
On a pretty steep hill.
Oh, yeah. Lynn and I have been talking about it. It's not just my word. It's all over. But that type of grant was needed, and now we just saw a huge hit. But there's no match to these.
Just the money's drying up. Is that what it is? That's what they
Yeah, they expected 67,000. Get 17 is, it's a hard one.
It's tight. Yeah. Any thoughts?
But no match on all three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Much appreciated on that. Very good report. Any other thoughts on any of this? Okay. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to adopt and approve all three grants, 18D, 18F, and 18G.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
On your vote, you've approved those three grants. What's your pleasure now, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, we can make a motion to table C and E in order to get a budget, so that we don't
Second that.
Okay, motions were made and seconded table items 18C and 18E. There is no debate of a motion to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. C and D, C and E tabled.
Make a motion to reconsider action on 18A.
I second that just to table. If we're not going to table, I will not second it.
I'll accept that second.
Check.
So that was to A, correct? That was your motion?
Please.
All right. Hold on, let me dig that out. All right. So there's a motion on the floor to reconsider our action to 18A. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Let's see. So raise your hand if you want to reconsider our action on 18A. Seven.
Sorry.
That's a, that's a one hand short, right? Need eight, I believe, to reconsider? Okay, raise your hand if you're sure. All right. Okay, very good. So we'll say that's eight, so that passes. Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Motion is made and seconded to table 18A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, so 18A lives for another day. So moved, so eighteen A lives for another day, potentially. And let's see here. So we've tabled A, C, E, we're now to H.
Take H and I as a package, suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take eighteen H and eighteen I as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Eighteen H reads, finance was referred in order that Doctors Reich meet with the finance subcommittee to discuss the city of Hoyo not making net school spending for 2016 school year. Please submit documentation for school year recommend that it's been complied with. Eighteen I, to whom was referred in order that pursuant to our conversation, a recent finance committee meeting, April 26, I am requesting an aligned item budget for the fiscal year and three fiscal years prior. Come through the department such as Halo, for example. Please have this provided to the finance committee within 10 business days. That has been complied with. And that's signed off by counselors McGee, Tomlin, Bacon, and Lopez.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, that it's complied with.
Okay, motion made and seconded to receive and adopt that that has been complied with. Under discussion, counselor McGee?
Yes, Doctors Reich, Anthony Soto, and Jay Sullivan from the Department of Education came in and everyone should have received in their email that large packet, about 100 pages about the budget for Halo, net school spending, transportation, and so on. It was a lengthy package, of which all three gentlemen came in and gave a history about net school spending, the projections from 2012 to current, and basically complied with what were requested. With regards to eighteen I, the focus was for Halo, of which they no longer need the money, so it's complied with.
Okay.
Now we go back to Monday, they have to bring a full budget in. That's separate from what this order was.
Which was Counsel Leahy's request.
Correct.
Okay.
So that'll be Monday that they should be providing that. But this for Halo...
Was just Halo.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting the two committee reports?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We had no public safety, public service committee reports for this particular meeting. So we're now on to the DGNR committee reports, and we have a few there. Leading off is 21A. 21A. 21A is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom was referred an order that a special permit application of United Material Management of Hoyoak, Inc. for 7.2.13 Motor Vehicle Repair Garage in an IG Zone at 700 Main Street. Hoyoak Assessor's Map 055 Block 000 Parcel 6. Recommend that the application be approved with the following conditions. Facility not open to the public. The hours of operation are Monday to Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. No outside dumpster. The remainder of the conditions are listed per applicant on March 28, 2017. Communication to the council president.
A motion receive and adopt the committee report.
Second.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, counselor Bartley.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. So this is United Material Management, and they're in Springdale, and they've got a great facility. So now they want to set up another repair garage across the street, and this is going to, you know, it's a small 4,300 square foot building or thereabouts. So there's some property tax revenue there. There's also the fact that they're going to have, you know, double-digit vehicles, low double-digit, but the vehicles are going to be here in Holyoke, so excise tax revenue supported by the Ward Two Counselor. We have some great recommendations about hours of operation. The engineers that came in from the Cape were really on point. So the committee said?
Yes.
Go forward.
All right.
Go forward, yes.
Thank you. Thoughts, comments, discussion of this item? Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, just one thing, on number three, you didn't mention about, that was one thing they talked about last night, I guess they were repairing the dumpsters, too. And you missed the parentheses, waste-filled. So they're stating that they may be repairing, they'll be outside, but there'll be no waste in them.
Okay.
That was a big thing last night, too.
That is on the agenda.
Yeah.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. There is no further discussion. The vote now is on adoption of the committee report and approval of the special permit with all aforementioned conditions. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the special permit with the conditions, and no vote is to deny the same.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the special permit for United Waste Management. 21B. 21B is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom was referred a special permit application of Mr. Anthony Valentino to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a nonconforming structure under 4.7.3 at 24 Old Ferry Road. Have considered the same. Recommend that the application be approved under the condition that the applicant will have no more than four bedrooms, and the new construction be consistent with the rest of the house in looks and appearance, and that materials and color scheme be consistent with the rest of the house and the surrounding neighborhood.
Motion receive and adopt the...
Second. Signed off by all five members of the DGNR committee. The committee chair has made a motion that the committee report be received and adopted. Under discussion, counselor Bartley.
I think Ryan did a really nice job of laying out what the committee report, what the committee discussed. The applicant, to his credit, he really stayed on point, and he was, he came and he, boy, he sat through a pretty long meeting, and he had some really great plans. I think his idea, and that's a really lovely street in Holyoke. I mean, it's heads to the canoe club, and it's a really nice neighborhood. So I think he's a real credit to his butters, and it looks like it's going to be a great house. Just to point out the four bedrooms, that was per regulations from Brian Fitzgerald that he pointed out. So that's why we added that deal about the four bedrooms.
And there was no neighborhood opposition?
No, no, and again, the city did a really nice job with notifying butters. I really liked how they have it laid out in the jacket. I mean, all the butters are spelled out in there, so it's...
Yep.
It's really, really a big improvement, yeah.
We're a first-class operation here, we try to be. And I would also point out that all taxes and municipal charges are current for this gentleman, too. Very good. Any other discussion, counselor McGivern?
The only thing we didn't know or no one knew was what the nonconforming use was.
I will say, this for a fun fact, though...
What's the zone there?
Residential.
Residential, yeah.
R1.
We're guessing it had to be buffers, and it predated the building or the garage predated the zoning.
I don't have the planning board's letter to me on this. In fact, I'm not sure if I received a planning board letter, but I certainly don't have it in my possession, so I apologize for that.
I think it's related to the garage probably being maybe multiple floors.
Application.
Dimensional, and yeah. When the zoning came in, they put buffers and set packs. Yeah. Probably the original house is built before the '70s, before we had zoning.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Just for, if I, can I address the city clerk?
Of course.
Okay, so, and just, the application's great. It's just his, if that's a question, Madam Clerk, that comes up from time to time, maybe that could be added to the special permit application provided by your office, you know, just about zoning. I'm just saying, hypothetically, if, you know, down the road, if you think it makes sense, maybe you could add a line there about how it's zoned.
Is it zoned?
It doesn't mention anything about zoning on here, so if this comes up again.
Yeah. Like, is it R1A?
No, the application's great, but maybe just add a line about zone. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will point out that his engineer is the former mayor of Springfield, so I thought you'd be interested in that.
Oh, Mr. Neffinger.
That's right.
Yes, I'm very familiar with him. Okay, great. So without further ado, is there any other discussion on this matter? Okay, hearing none. We're going to take this to a vote. On item number 21B, the recommendation is to adopt the committee report, which is to approve Mr. Valentino's request for a special permit with all the aforementioned conditions. A yes vote is to adopt the committee report and grant Mr. Valentino the special permit, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the special permit for Mr. Valentino. Next up is item number 21C, the Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom was referred a special permit application for Mount Tom Solar LLC for a special permit amendment for 200 North Hampton Street. For addition of a battery storage system, updated compensatory flood storage, southern access road improvements with the floodplain overlay district, recommend that the application be approved under the condition that the applicant will plant a minimum of 150 eastern red cedar trees to be planted along the western boundary as screening for the solar array. Applicant shall maintain trees in screening to the satisfaction of the building commissioner. And this is signed off for adoption by counselors Bartley, McGivern, Tomlin, Sullivan, and Roman.
Motion receive and adopt the committee report.
Second. Has been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, granting this special permit, which only seems just days have passed since, how many amendments for this applicant? They're a frequent flyer at this point.
This is their second time. This is their first amendment. They were here exactly a year ago.
Okay, very good. Similar to just yesterday.
Yeah, it was a year ago in June, and so the motions to receive and adopt the committee report, the applicant, so, I mean, just to familiarize ourselves with it, this is way out of Smith Ferry. It's a former Mount Tom coal power plant. There is a huge solar array there now, and the gas-electric, it's going to benefit the gas-electric. It's not exactly the most exciting thing, but when this is going to solidify any downtime, potential downtime in power transmission, so, by the batteries being installed. So that's kind of an important piece. Again, it's a credit to the gas-electric, they're going to benefit all the ratepayers in the city. The parcel itself is, it sits on 23 acres. It really, I mean, it's basically in a floodplain, Mr. President. I will point out a couple little things. At one point, apparently back in the 1980s, there was a subdivision plant out there called Amanda Way, as in the woman's name, Amanda, and the street, Amanda Way. And where that went, we don't know, but that's why there's this quote-unquote "southern access road" that is now going to be made kind of a permanent road, and they have a permanent easement that they receive from Mass DOT to get back there. The various fencing is in place. There is a video camera that's going to be in place, so there's going to be pretty good security. The amendment that I hope to pass, and that we did pass in committee, I hope we passed tonight, is a screening along Route 5. Right now, it's atrocious. There is no screening. And if you look out on County Road and just that joke of a setup, the way that is there with all the solar panels in there, with a homely-looking fence, and it just sits there in the middle of a field. It's an abomination, it's an embarrassment. So the hope was that finally we'd get them coming around, and I predicted it when they were here a year ago. I said that we were going to have our day, and we had our day, and so they agreed to put in 150 trees, which by my calculations, are between a $5 and $10,000 cost. For them, it's a drop in the bucket. This is a multi-billion-dollar corporation, but at least they stepped up and they're going to plant the trees. So that's that. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
Our real purview here is the floodplain district question and the allowing of this in the overlay district itself, which we did with the original permit, and now with the amendment to the original permit. And I think Counselor Bartley was very astute in recognizing it's a time to add some conditions. Their attorney recognized that and with a very friendly smile, you know, agreed to the conditions. And I think they're a tribute to our chairman and to the committee to make sure that the screening is in place and that this project is aware of not only the neighborhood, but all of us who drive by it on occasion.
Any other thoughts, comments, concerns? Very good. Without further ado, we'll take a vote on the committee recommendation, which is that this be adopted with the aforementioned conditions. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez? Ten yeas.
Ten zero. So adopted. Twenty-one D. Twenty-one D is a report for the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application of T-Mobile Northeast LLC for a wireless communication facility to be located at twelve twenty-one Main Street, Assessor's Map one nineteen Block Zero Parcel One. Recommend that the application be approved with the condition that the engineering report shall be created and merged into the application, and the antenna array shall be painted in a color uniform to the smokestack. And I would just like to say, I, Kevin Jordan, will not be voting on this because the, for those that might be aware, twelve twenty-one Main Street is owned by the Sisters of Providence, which is one of many organizations that is my ultimate employer, so.
Motion received and adopted committee report.
Second.
Due to my own personal conflict, I will not be voting or participating in the debate, but for the purposes of administrative, uh, ease and efficiency, I will, I will handle the motions. So, uh, under, uh, the committee chairman has made a motion that this be adopted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
So, oh, thanks, Mike. Um, yeah, very, uh, very straightforward, we're, uh, you know, we are just very business-friendly here, and we, we love it when, uh, when two private parties come together and they sign a huge lease that nobody sees, but that's okay, somebody's getting paid.
Thanks.
And, uh, and yet, we're gonna, we're gonna put all these, these, these cell phone towers wrapped around the, uh, smokestack, we've, we've, we've got thirty of them in Holyoke, and, um, at least the smokestacks, while they're not belching out smoke, at least they're good for something, which is holding up, uh, solar arrays, and, uh, it's gonna help, it's gonna help the, uh, the customers for T-Mobile, it's gonna be a benefit to the Sisters of Providence, Providence Hospital. Um, I think we made a couple of good, good amendments to this. One, we will point out that the representative last night for the, uh, for the, for the vendor noted that the top six feet of the smokestack are unstable, they will be removed. Nevertheless, we were assured, and we have an engineering port that we've merged now into the application, we've been assured that the smokestack is, uh, A, not within a, you know, it's not gonna fall on anybody, uh, it's not, there's no fall line there, well, there's, if it fell, um, it's not gonna, no potential to land on any buildings, but, you know, there are roads up there, and the committee felt that just to be on the safe side, that the engineering report should be included within the application. And then Counselor McGivern was concerned about the aesthetics. I, I wanted it painted red, Mr. President, just like you had suggested, with a big J, a big white J, just like the one up at, um, Scott's Tower. I made that motion, but I didn't get a second on it, so, um, that one, we, we couldn't get for you, pal, but, uh, but Counselor McGivern made a good motion to sort of have it blend in, so it's, it looks as natural as it possibly could, and, uh, with that, I'll defer. Thank you.
Other thoughts, comments, discussion? Hearing none. Vote will be on adoption of the committee recommendation, which is that this be approved. The clerk will call the roll, and that is with all the aforementioned conditions, a yes vote is in favor of adoption of the committee report, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one abstain.
By your vote, you have approved that special, um, permit. What did I do with my pen? Here we go. Brings us now to twenty-one E.
We, uh, could, Mr. President, can we do twenty-one E and twenty-one F together, suspend rules?
Second.
Oh, please, yeah. Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take twenty-one E, twenty-one F as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. With abbreviated readings?
Thank you.
Good. Uh, twenty-one E comes to us from DGNR. It's a special permit application of William Johnson to operate a motor vehicle repair garage at one seventy Main Street with the following, um, conditions, recommendations of the planning board to be adhered to, hours of operation to be nine to six, Monday to Friday, Saturday ten to three, that parking adhere to city ordinances as described by the planning board, that the dumpster is required to be locked overnight. Twenty-one F is also for Mr. William Johnson to operate a used motor vehicle facility at one seventy Main Street. Approve with the conditions as follows, adhere to Monday to Friday nine to six, Saturday ten to three, parking to adhere to city ordinances as prescribed by, and, excuse me, as described by the planning board, locking the dumpster overnight, further condition that the applicant shall have a maximum of thirteen used cars on, uh, for sale on this lot. So we have two permits. One is for Mr. Johnson to operate an motor vehicle repair garage, second being a used motor vehicle facility, both to be located at one seventy Main Street with those conditions that I described.
Uh, make a motion, receive and adopt the committee report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee reports, approve the special permits for, uh, both of these for Mr. Johnson. Under discussion, Mr. Bartley.
Yeah, let me just, uh, clarify, the, Mr. Johnson is the property owner, the business owner is Mr. Mariano Gomez Jr., so, and it's Sam's Quality Motors, so, uh, there was a little bit of confusion last night on the application, but Mr. John, so Mr. Gomez Jr. is a tenant of Mr. Johnson, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if, if, you know, Mr. Mr. Johnson has the permit application, but this is, these are imposed, uh, this is to grant permits for Mr. Gomez, and the conditions are to be imposed upon his business. So whether, do we need to have that language in there, Mr. President?
Well, you know, it says the applicant is Mariano Gomez Jr., and the property owner is.
Okay, then.
William Johnson. I would say, by way of, by way of illustration, on the last permit, Sisters of Providence is the owner, T-Mobile is the applicant, we granted the special permit to the applicant, this is ordered, says Mr. Johnson is getting the permit, but in fact, I think it's Mr. Gomez that's getting the permit, so.
It's Mr. Gomez.
You may wanna, you may wanna double-check that, 'cause on the reading of the committee jacket, as it reads right now, we're voting on a permit, on a special permit for Mr. Johnson, not for Mr. Gomez.
Well, I can assure you that the, uh, Mr. Per, Mr. Johnson was, was the applicant, but it's, and, and the letters.
So we should just clarify that, as we're, as we're doing this, that I think for sake of clarity, just to be careful, I would recommend we amend the committee, uh, reports to say that we are granting a special permit application of Mariano Gomez Jr. for this on both.
DBA, DBA Sam's Quality Motors.
DBA Sam's Quality Motors, uh, in parentheses, parcel owned by William Johnson.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, sir, a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay. I think Mr. Gomez would appreciate that, yeah.
I think he would, and with that, I think Ryan did a really nice job of laying it all out, so it's, it's a, it's a person wants to pop a business on, on Main Street, and, uh, and the committee was fully supportive.
Okay, Counselor McGivern?
Just a, a quick clarification, I agree with the, with the chairman, the, on the parking, um, what he was requesting was twelve repair slots and twelve and thirteen cars for sale. Um, there is a map that is, I believe, attached to the, to the application, we had it last night, and it was clear that there was more than enough spaces for employees, customers, and for the, uh, the thirteen cars for sale, and he has two bays inside, which would, would take care of two of the repair cars at one time, and needed an additional, at least additional ten anticipated repair, cars to be repaired on a given day. So that, the, the way the language is reading is adhere to the city ordinances, but the special permit is to adhere to the map that's attached. The thirteen is important, 'cause that goes on, on the auto, on the auto sales permit itself, so that when someone inspects it, they know how many cars are allowed. I, I just want to note, Mr. President, that I, I know the ordinance committee members are sitting here and thanking the DGR committee, 'cause this was the fifth public hearing with one more to go this, this evening yet, and during this, these first five public hearings, note that we, we had no department heads, no city solicitor was, was there, no one was there to advise us, the chairman had the advice in advance, I had some advice on my phone in advance, and we were able to, you know, to do what once was the ordinance committee's responsibility, so we, we accept your thanks.
Trust me, I'm grateful. We're here till eleven anyway.
That is a statement of the city's confidence in its chairman and its senior member, so, uh, that, that level of confidence.
We, we.
To just let you guys go right out there.
We had a Ward One City Councilor with us, and all members of the DGR committee participated and did a fine job.
But all that, exuding all that knowledge and experience is appreciated.
I'm just, I'm grateful.
So anyways, uh, we have before us, counselors, these two special permits for Mr. Mariano Gomez Jr., uh, both to operate a repair garage as well as a used car lot. Um, any other discussion or comments? Yes, Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to say, it was, it was a great meeting, and then they, he came in here and explained everything, what he wanted to do, and of course Chairman, Chairman Bartley, um, you know, we had the questions for him, and, and the gentleman had his attorney here with him, too, uh, it's just great to see somebody willing to, to step up and, and start a business and, and to make a living down there in that area, and outlot, that's very, you know, pretty, uh, well-busy as it is, so, um, I, I wish him well.
Any other thoughts? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, and again, we're voting on these as a package, so it's a twofer, so, uh, vote, uh, twenty-one E and twenty-one F, um, a yes vote is in favor of both, and no vote is against both. Clerk will call the roll, please.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved those special permits. Twenty-one G also comes to us by way of the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the city council vote to approve an order of taking to acquire by eminent domain and in fee simple absolute forty-three hundred and four square foot parcel located at five fifteen, five nineteen Dwight Street for the construction of a center-city pedestrian plaza, and to award damages for such taking of an amount of twenty thousand dollars. Said parcel, five one five, five one nine Dwight Street, is identified by the HOYUP Board of Assessors, map thirteen, Block Four, Parcel Four, a copy of the order of a taking is hereby attached. And, uh, do we have the identity of who we're taking that from?
It's the, uh, former Pizza Palace owned by Maria.
It's on the order of taking, I don't, I don't have it in.
Oh, okay.
That's in the jacket.
All right. Well, the committee is recommending that it be denied anyways, and, uh, so there was a request of the city to acquire this property by, for twenty thousand dollars from, uh, what is now a dirt-angled lot.
So I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, committee report be received and adopted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, which was approved by counselors Bartley, McGivern, and Sullivan. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Okay, so this is a three-two vote in committee. Okay, all right, so, um, the, I don't have to look at my notes, so the, the properties are directly across Dwight Street, former Pizza Palace. Um, this kind of started a couple years ago with the, uh, Community Development Block grant funds, so, uh, it's the mayor's call, and, uh, it's been shepherded by the Planning Economic Development Director to make a park, a green space, running from Dwight Street to John Street. Um, our understanding from, uh, the Planning Economic Development Director is if this, and they, they tried to, they tried to negotiate with the, with the property owner to, to no avail, um, the, and it didn't sound like they're far off, but ultimately, the property owner said, uh, said no go, and so the, the offer on the table to us for, for, to her, and, um, is twenty thousand dollars. Um, and, and we, we heard repeatedly that these are, they're not city funds being used. So, so let's, let's be, let's be clear, let's be clear about this, it is not Holyoke taxpayer money's being used, it's community development block grant funds being used. Well, what's the difference? Well, the, the, there's still taxpayer dollars, um, they're, they're, they're programming dollars that, that we felt, this is two years ago, in, in committee, and at full city council, and by the Citizens Advisory Board, that they should be programmed differently, but as we know, the, the game is played, that the mayor makes a call on CDBG funds, the mayor wanted a park. Total budget for said park, this is per Mr. Marrero, total budget for said park is three hundred ninety thousand dollars for said park. Now, said, now, three hundred ninety thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand dollars have been expended to date. Now, that's on, um, some engineering fees. I don't have those invoices, so don't ask me for the invoices, I just, you know, I'm gonna rely on Marcos for that, I'm sure he's accurate in it. So that's about, let's just say, nine percent of the budget has been, has been expensed so far. So several questions were raised. Um, you know, one, are we, are we pot-committed so far? Well, is nine percent saying that we should use, should we go all the way at this point? 'Cause we spent nine percent. Well, I don't know. Um, I mean, I know, but I know I voted, but I'm trying to be diplomatic here. Um, the, uh, another comment was saying, you know, can we, can we reprogram these funds? Well, I don't have a direct answer from Ms. Zeller, um, though we asked Mr. Marrero and Mr. Dijek to get that for us, but we, we don't have an answer on that. Uh, we did get an answer from Mr. Dijek tonight, that the property taxes are, are compliant, so, so we do know that. Um, we, the questions was raised last night, well, if the property owners want to fight this, what happens then? I don't know is the answer. Well, if they win a lawsuit, are city funds then spent? I don't know is the answer. Would they be spent from, directly from CDBG funds, or they just spent from city taxpayer dollars? I don't know is the answer. To this date, we don't know the answer. I mean, it was twenty-four hours later, so I mean, I, I, but those are questions that are, should have been, and we felt, I mean, they're pretty, they should have been expected. Um, now, the, the rationale behind the park, again, green space is important, so let's talk about the project on Lyman Terrace. The development going on there is going to increase parking at Lyman Terrace. It is going to minimize green space, so that was one of the arguments made. So there's gonna be more parking at Lyman Terrace, there's gonna be less green space, consequently, we should have more green space in this proposal. Okay? Um, another one of the arguments that we heard, now, this is from every person, now, no, we didn't have a whole lot of people here, but we had two people from the public, and we had a counselor here, and, and we had, and we had the staff, to a person, they mentioned Farmer's Market. Well, because we get the Farmer's Market on the middle of High Street, which, I don't know, I guess sometimes it gets too hot out there for even the farmers, give, have the sun beat off the asphalt, and they don't like it. But we do know they like it, and the fact that, that it attracts, you know, maybe some bigger crowds, and that they also have access to electricity. So the comment we got, well, we can get same kind of crowds, we get better parking over here, and we can get access to electricity. Well, why don't we have it at, at Chestnut Street at Veterans Park? Well, farmers end up in business. Well, why don't we have a Cusco Park? Well, we never tried it there. Well, why don't we have it at Harish Park? Well, we never tried it there. But Farmer's Market, let's just, and I'll just end here now, because I know other counselors want to speak. Uh, if you recall, two years ago, when we had CDBG but, debate, such as it is, I, I think Mike made a really good recommendation, and we all agreed on it, to try to have more funds go into demo. We agreed here at city council unanimously, the Citizens Advisory Board can, agree with it, but the person that makes the call disagreed. Didn't want it to go into sidewalks, didn't want to go into any infrastructure improvements, didn't want it to go into demo, wanted to go into what's ultimately now budgeted as a three hundred ninety thousand dollar, five thousand square foot park.
Are they naming this park to me, or are they naming the Dallas Park?
So, so there's, well, we don't have a name yet, Counselor, but that's, that's okay, so.
They party.
I, I, I'll, no, 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 sir. Uh, I, I think I pretty much hit the, uh, you know, the assessed value, that, that, that was, well, what's the assessed value of this parcel? Three thousand dollars. What did the property owner want for this originally? One hundred thousand dollars. Okay, what did the property owner finally come down to? Thirty thousand. I want my thirty thousand, and I'm not budgeting. Would you take the twenty thousand? No doggone it. So this is why we've, this is now, why we're now at eminent domain, because the property owner, who originally wanted a hundred thousand on a three thousand dollar assessed useless little lot, with, which is blighted, said, no doggone it, I'm sticking my thirty thousand, and I'm not budgeting. Okay, good for you. Is it likely that this person's gonna sue? Probably not. Is this likely, if this person sued, would, would, would she win? Likely not, but it's out there. I mean, so we don't, we don't have an answer on, on that. One question we didn't ask is, how long did she have to file a claim? How long would this be hanging over? I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I didn't ask the question, and, uh, but that would be one that, I mean, I mean, gosh, imagine if they actually built the park, and then she files, files a suit, and then she wins the suit? Where, where are we now?
Billion-dollar perk.
I, I mean, this is a problem with, with eminent domain. Now, some of us are philosophically opposed eminent domain, I being one of them, but, but in certain cases, um, I don't think this is one of them, but in certain cases, you could see the argument, and, and we all know it's in the Constitution, so, you know, the frame of the Constitution thought it was a good idea, so it's probably, you know, probably worthwhile as a, as a thought. Like I said, we had, uh, we, we had some, you know, some good points raised, um, by the public, I, I want to thank the public for, for participating, I want to thank the Ward One Counselor, 'cause I think our arguments were valid, um, it's, it is Ward One, but I, I don't think you can get around the fact that, um, it's a three hundred ninety thousand dollar park, there's so many open questions about lawsuits, um, there are three parks around it, yeah, I mean, you can't ignore, and they're all in Ward One, you can't ignore that. Four parks. You got the skateboard park, too. Well, that's part of the same array, Mike, but, okay, it's the skate, four parks, then fine. Um, but it's, you know, when it comes down to a Farmer's Market being on High Street or over at a park yet to be named for the three hundred ninety thousand dollar park, I, I voted no. The committee was three to two, so, I mean, there are, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I think we've covered the issues. Counselor Roman?
Yes, thank you. I was one of the two counselors who voted no. Um, I would actually like to see it, and I'm gonna try, and if it goes down, that's fine tonight, after I make my comments, see if we could table it. I just have some questions that I emailed Alicia Zoller last night, and I'm waiting to hear back. Everything my colleague said was true, and I was one of those colleagues, both on DGNR and in this full body, who voted against that proposal for this same park, um, and yet here I am, speaking in favor of it, only because of the fact that, yes, as my colleague just pointed out, we did spend thirty-five thousand dollars that was allocated, and as my colleague stated, both in the meeting and here tonight, irregardless of how we vote, if the next CBDG cycle comes out, if the mayor wants to again appropriate money towards this park, we will again be in this position. towards this park, we will again be in this position. So all I'm concerned with, and I'm waiting to get a concrete answer, is what does this, by us not expending this large amount of money, what will that do for our spend rate when it comes to HUD on our CBDG funding? So if this is gonna impact us negatively, all of the other work that we've done and all of the other projects we have approved, whether that's the equestrian club, the boys and girls club, community policing, is that going to drastically decrease our funding? Is it gonna have an impacting with HUD? So I'm waiting for that specific answer from Alicia Zoller. Uh, I know some of my other colleagues wanna speak, so I'm gonna allow them to speak, but I would like to just table this to allow for two more weeks, cause again, there was a lot of unanswered questions, I felt, last night. I felt this was rushed, I wanted it to either just, you know, just, I don't know, not make it out last night. I, I know it wasn't gonna pass the tabling last night, but I would like to see it tabled here to get concrete answers or responses from Alicia, as long as it's not gonna impact us from HUD. Um, I do know that on CBDG money, there is reprogrammed money at the end of the year, meaning money that is left over from other projects that have been coming less, and still that reprogrammed money is, who determines where that money gets spent? The mayor. So irregardless if we don't use this money, the mayor could say tomorrow with that reprogrammed money, well, let's go build another smaller pocket park here or let's go use that money there. And that's his duty under that guideline. And again, I, I agree with my colleagues. I was one of those people that wanted to listen to the community advisory board when they said this project wasn't a go. DGR committee, this wasn't a go. The full body, when we said this project wasn't a go, but at the end of the day, it was appropriated. It did go to HUD as the approved project. So I'm just concerned on how this is gonna impact our HUD funding. Um, I'll allow some of my other colleagues to speak and then I am gonna try to make a motion to see if we could table it. Once I get that concrete answer, then I'd feel comfortable defeating this, as long as it's not gonna impact those other projects or those other programs. So with that, I'll yield back.
Okay. Let me give you your concrete answer right here. That will not have any impact whatsoever, one way or the other, on CDBG. Okay? It's just gonna go to unprogrammed money. So you've got eighty-five percent, which is going to construction, and then you got the fifteen percent going to public service. Anything that's unprogrammed, anything that doesn't get spent, the mayor says, I wanna spend three hundred and ninety thousand on this, then it'll go to unprogrammed. He, he's allowed to reallocate it. What, you're absolutely right. Hundred percent, he gets to do the reallocation. End of story. They, doesn't affect us one way, it's just this, this project won't happen. Um, I mean, and if he went to go put that on another park, I suppose he could do it if he owned the land. He's not gonna be able to do this because the problem that he has procedurally is, he doesn't own the property where he wants to spend it. So now he needs this order of taking, which is really problematic, because in a way, if the owner will not agree to sell us the property at this twenty thousand, eh, she might say, well, it's worth hiring a lawyer for a couple of grand and I'll go fight it out. And what's the worst that's gonna happen? I'm gonna end up with twenty grand? And in the, in the meantime, we'll spend, I don't know how many thousands defending that, and you can't really walk into Superior Court on something like this for, you know, probably less than five or 10 grand, you know, so we're gonna waste that. Um, she, she probably, she probably knows that. So then there's this, oh, give her twenty-five, you know, bring it back to the council and, you know, then they have all this type of stuff. But as far as your CDBG question, I wouldn't let that worry, I wouldn't let that sway you one way or the other. Um, I know how I'm voting on this, but I will, uh, one way or the other, you're either in favor of spending three hundred and ninety thousand to build this park at this location and take this land from this lady for twenty grand and hope she goes away, or you're not for that and to do something else. Um, but we're not gonna lose the money. I assure you that. Um, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, two main facts jump out at me. Um, the fact that it's eminent domain and I'm generally philosophically opposed to that, particularly when the owner is opposed to it, and the other part of it is spending twenty thousand dollars for property worth three thousand, just on its face, with a city that is broke. Why would we do that? Makes no sense to me. Thank you.
The parallel to the congregate house being given away for a dollar.
Which I do not support.
Which, by the way, is, I just wanna point that out, some people may actually vote to buy this piece of dirt, there's nothing for twenty thousand, but give the congregant housing away. Uh, Counselor Sullivan was next.
Thank you. Uh, I don't, everything's been expressed pretty well, I think, over the last couple of months where I stand with what happened with the CDBG funds. The opportunity, I'd like to stress here, is now to have, well, three hundred ninety minus thirty-five, but to have, uh, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars available as we go through this budget process the next few days, to look at all the hard decisions and hard cuts we've got. There are a lot of items in our budget now where this money could be spent, where we could take it out of the taxpayers' dollars and this, if, if denying the taking of this property forces this money back to a place where the mayor could use it to fill some of the places we have to slash and some of the hard decisions, it's gonna make those hard decisions easier on us, knowing that that three hundred fifty-five thousand on those cuts is sitting on his desk to patch those holes. That's it.
Counsel McGivern.
Um, to me, this is, first and foremost, is an eminent domain, um, issue, an eminent domain, which I too am not, never have been very fond of, since the Good Sisters of Providence won their court battle, you know, I do point them out, Mr. President, and when the Dean School, you know, was, was taking land and two, uh, two landowners, one being the Good Sisters, won a court battle, and, and an owner of what was vacant little garage, you know, which all of a sudden, we saw used cars being sold out of it for the first time in twenty years, you know, won his battle and, and eminent domain doesn't work. Um, I can tell you a story about a little lot across from the YMCA, next to the, the park on the corner of Appleton and Beach Street where eminent domain doesn't work. I have a problem with the twenty thousand dollars. It came from an appraisal, um, under federal standards, which I'm not too sure, because I even question whether this lot can be built upon, it's been vacant for over ten years. The dimensions are very close to, uh, to my recollection of being non-buildable and that's an answer that I'm waiting for. Um, there was a second appraisal, they had it at ten thousand eight hundred dollars, which, which, you know, may be even a little bit more, uh, palatable in, in terms of what to, what to pay for the lot, but again, eminent domain is no guarantee. So my big question was, if the money is used from black grant monies to buy the, buy the parcel through eminent domain and the owner takes the city to court, wins damages, does black grant monies pay for the damages or does the general fund? I, I think we know the answer, but we didn't get it. And I'd like, I'd like to get those answers regardless of, our, our committee handled the original proposal through the black grant for the park, and whether you're in favor of it, have a mixed reaction to it or against it, I think the answers to these questions are important before you could act on eminent domain one way or the other. So when the time is appropriate, I'll support Counselor Roman's motion to table.
Counsel Lebron Martinez.
Yeah, I, I was also going to recommend or suggest that we actually table it until we get some of the information that we're pending on, and hopefully, um, Mr. Marrero probably, you know, had gotten back to the, uh, owner of this piece of land and see if there's any other negotiations that can come forward for us. I really hope that, you know, it can take place. It is a, it's within the area that a lot of the development is taking place and it'll be nice to have that develop as well. I know the budget is an issue, but it is something that we're hoping for. So, thank you.
Motion to table, Mr. President?
Second. All right, motions been made and seconded to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? So raise your hand if you want a table. Four, motion fails. So we're on the main motion, which is to adopt the committee report, which is that the matter be denied. Clerk, if there's no, I don't believe there's any other discussion, right? Okay, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is on, uh, adoption of the committee recommendation, which is to deny the order of taking request. A yes vote is to adopt the committee recommendation and deny the order of taking. A no vote is to oppose the committee recommendation and grant the order of taking.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Did you ask me?
Oh, Lebron Martinez, I'm sorry.
No. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Eight yeas, four nays.
Three nays.
Three nays.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Eight to three. Okay. And we had, so that rounds out the DGNR committee for this evening. We had no chartering rules for this particular meeting, no joint committee meeting, uh, reports for this particular meeting. We're now on to motions, orders and resolutions. And if, uh, folks are okay that we can keep as much as possible to a limited, uh, how about suspend the rules perhaps for limited reading and try to our human best to send these things off to committee with as little discussion as possible, or, or maybe they're just adopt, uh, and sent to a certain department. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. Okay, twenty-four, that a handicap parking space at thirty-nine Vernon be removed.
Ordinance.
Ordinance with a copy to Disabilities Commission, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-five, fire department chief provide a copy of the final agreement with action ambulance, also a copy of the liability work, workers' comp insurance in case any action employee gets hurt in any of the fire stations. Copies within ten days. Adopt and send to the fire department?
And the law department.
And the law department. Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the law department as well as the fire department.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-six from Counsel Lopez, that the police chief provide the council an update regarding the two million dollar bond for police radios tower and such.
Can we finance?
Okay, motions to send to the finance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-seven, that the ordinance committee and the law department establish, uh, a new ordinance for the, regarding the solicitation, uh, and panhandling near intersections of the city, that it not be allowed at least two hundred feet from intersections, schools, libraries, stores, daycares. Also, any solicitation or panhandling person obtain a five dollar permit from the city council. Any medians in the city will have no loitering signs and a fine of fifty dollars for anyone without a permit. Motion on the floor is to send to ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-eight is introduced by Counselor McGee, order that the DPW and forestry department remove the tree on the tree belt between forty-one and thirty-three, George.
Receive, adopt, send to forestry.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt and refer to the forestry department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-nine introduced by Counsel McGee, order that the DPW forestry remove the tree on the tree belt in front of seventy-nine, George.
Receive, adopt, send to forestry.
Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt and send to forestry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thirty introduced by Counsel McGee, that the GNE replace or repair the street light near twenty-three Stagger Road as soon as possible. Also that the GNE review and assess if another light is needed in that area.
Receive, adopt, send to HGE, request within two weeks.
Motion on the floor has been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the GNE with a response back within two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thirty-one introduced by Counselor McGee, that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars be transferred from printing and binding to temporary seasonal help. Oh, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty dollars, looked like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Six hundred and fifty dollars from printing and binding to temporary seasonal help and unclear as to what department.
Finance.
Motion on the floor is to send to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thirty-two is that the city adopt the diverting juveniles and emerging adults from Community Justice System Involvement Grant.
Finance.
Motion on the floor is to send thirty-two to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thirty-three introduced by Counsel McGee, that the DPW replace the missing Pinehurst sign, street sign near the corner of Pinehurst and West Franklin. Could I be added as a co-sponsor? Adding Counselordane as a co-sponsor. I can tell you that I spoke to the DPW superintendent and it's in the works. The only thing I'll tell you is you can't get the historic old style sign anymore, they're gonna give her a new sign. Just FYI, but, uh, constituent, uh, will be taken care of. S- okay, so receive. I know, I know. They love ya, they love ya. Uh, receive and adopt, refer to the DPW, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I thought Counsel McGee was going door to door in the wrong ward.
Old habits, President.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up items thirty-four through thirty-nine as a package? They're all going on the same committee?
Okay. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up items thirty-four through thirty-nine as a package. I'll just briefly read through those. First of all, all in favor suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thirty-four through thirty-nine all come to us by way of Counsel Roman. Thirty-four, handicap sign be placed in front of sixty-eight Cabot for Ann Alicia. Thirty-five, handicap sign be placed in front of five seventy-seven South Bridge for Nathaniel Santiago. Thirty-six, that a recreational marijuana moratorium be amended to end in July of twenty eighteen, or when we adopt the ordinance, whichever is sooner. Believe that's already in the current ordinance. Uh, thirty-seven, that a no parking sign in front of sixty-one Commercial be removed. And thirty-eight, that the city of Hoyok establish an ordinance that would regulate the maintenance of vacant or foreclosed residential properties and foreclosures of owner occupied residential properties called a foreclosure ordinance. Item number thirty-nine, city Hoyok establish an ordinance that would facilitate the mediation of mortgage foreclosures of owner occupied residential properties called a mediation ordinance. Motion on the floor from Counsel Roman is all of these be sent to the ordinance committee.
Second.
I'd like to be add on, if, with the maker of the order, I'd like to be add on to the foreclosure in, in forty-one.
Okay, so adding you on to thirty-eight and thirty-nine?
Forty-one.
We ain't up to forty-one yet.
I'm sorry, the, the one with the, uh...
Excusing my poor, excluding my poor English of saying ain't, but, uh, we're, we're at thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, no problem. All right, adding Counsel Lebron Martinez to thirty-eight and thirty-nine and maybe soon another, another, uh, one. All on the floor is to send all of those to ordinance. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Introduced by Counsel Roman, that the...
Supposedly DPW, sorry, Mr. President, if I can make an amendment?
Yeah, friendly amendment to change department to DPW. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That the DPW place signage on sixty Hamilton Street for the public parking lot, residents and businesses are unaware that this is a public parking lot.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-one is introduced by Counsel Roman, that the attached letters from the Morgan School students, eighth graders, in support of the Parks Bond Package for the repair of the Valley Arena Park be submitted to the DGNR committee?
DGNR?
Yep, motion's been made and seconded to receive these, uh, letters from the students and sent over to the DGNR committee, and Counsel Bartley will give a personal response to all of them. Uh, all in favor of that? Opposed? So moved.
Oh, formal.
Item number forty-two.
Sticking, sticking in favor.
Okay.
Can I be on that with you?
Uh, Counsel Bartley has filed a very lengthy order relative to counsel inviting the board council invited in the board members of Hoyoc Media to a DGNR Committee meeting to discuss a, a sundry of issues relative to PEG access, to Hoyoc Community Media. And um, there you have it.
Well, just under discussion, let's, I mean, I know...
Okay, so motion is to send to DGNR.
Yeah, go, motion, send to DGNR.
Okay, so that's on the floor. Brief discussion?
Yeah. You, you can easily do the math. This is cut and paste from the Hoyoc Media website. Just do the math. You're talking hundreds of thous- supposedly, if the Comcast fees are coming in and if people are still paying their Comcast bills, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, well over a million dollars collected in the last four years. I mean, probably closer to two million dollars. What is happening with this money? So I know at some point Todd's, Todd's, you know, listen, we, we've got something in Finance, we'll take up in Finance and we've asked the mayor to come in. We, we got in Finance, there's a lot going on. I, you know, I'm worried about it. Uh, but now I said, let's get these folks around this HoyocMedia.com website. That's where this is, this is coming from. These are supposed to be board members. I mean, you, you can come in, you're, sit in front of us if you want. I, 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 you know, Hoyoc Media, I, I think it's, I'm not even clear. It was, actually, I am clear. It's a private nonprofit corporation, five oh one C three. So they're no, they're under no obligation to come in because I don't think it's part of the city government. And yet, a city contract with Comcast is funding this entity and we don't know where the money is. We don't, I don't know who these people are, other than uh, Mike Hines. Let, let's have an open discussion about this. Thank you.
Wonder if the old treasurer could give us a report. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. And Mr. President, we've had this in Finance Committee for a year and have been completely ignored because they also want to have a revolving fund, if I remember correctly. So, it's sort of this entity with thousands and thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands.
It's been completely non-responsive and the aegis of this whole group started here. I mean, how these things get totally out of control is just bizarre to me.
There's no transparency and I think that was the way it was designed to, to allegedly take the politics out of it. So the, the PEG access never meets. The mayor, we were originally had a PEG access committee of myself, the mayor, and Caracunia, and that has been dissolved. And it's this, and I believe the mayor funnels that money. And under, he, he ultimately is the recipient as the appointing authority of who Comcast gets the money to him. And does what, literally whatever he says. Cause he's the signatory of the contract and he says, give the money here. So there's over a million dollars in that account. And there's no public auditing of it that I'm aware of. It's, it's being, uh, people really need to hold them accountable for what is happening to this money.
But as a five oh one C charitable, they have certain filings they have to do. They have a mission that they have to be documenting to maintain their status that they are actually operating under. I mean, they can't just sit there collecting the money.
Well, you know, they were allegedly at one point gonna create all these jobs and, you know, a building and, you know, who, who knows?
But they're going to ninety-nine Suffolk.
Yeah, that, I don't know, that never happened. They're not there, yet. Maybe someday they'll end up there. These are hopes.
Well, I, I just encourage you to go on that website. It's Hoyoc Media, you can just Google it.
I'm well aware.
And then you can, well, you can watch a little uh, press conference from the mayor with these board members around him talking about, well, we've now, you know, we've opened up, we, we used to be a committee with the mayor, this council president solicitor, no, no, no more. We're gonna open up to the public.
For what purpose?
Well, they talked a great game on the sales pitch.
So...
There's no public access channel. There's none of these things that are allegedly supposed to be...
Well, you remember my suggestion?
Public access station, I'm sure we'll talk about all this.
Three years ago, Mr. President, I said, how come the...
The mayor doesn't care.
How come the public access committee doesn't have its darn meetings on public access TV? Oh, no, we don't want that. Why would, why would we wanna have meetings about that on, on television?
That's their little fiefdom of, of cash.
Thank you. Just a DGR, please. Thank you.
That's their little fiefdom of cash. Uh, Counselor McGivern?
A suggestion, I think everyone knows I've been vocal about how PEG access, the original PEG access got dissolved without the City Council voting on it. And the understanding that we have no say over the contract and that the mayor did renegotiate the contract to where additional dollars that was never seen before started coming in about two years ago. I will point out, I, I did at an earlier meeting and suggest that someone be invited into the, uh, the meeting to discuss this. Is that this group more recently came to the HEDIC Board looking to buy the old Gleason's Townhouse, which under Mayor Sullivan, HEDIC had bought for the city at the, uh, at, I forget what year, but it was probably about ten, twelve years ago. And they are interested in that. And one of the things they did tell us, I'm sure we can ask question, more questions and get more answers, is they've, they've only recently, and I'm going back a half a year now, but they only re, at that time only recently came into a member, memorandum of understanding with the city and with the monies. And they weren't happy with a lot of things that were, the legalities of a lot of things that were going on and were literally not doing much theirselves other than planning. But I, I think, I hope the, the, that they be forthcoming with the answers and forthcoming with the, with the mission. Because it's uh, there should be transparency in, in this area. And one of the things I stated at that meeting and I'll state at whatever meeting this, this takes place in is we need the city to have accountability over this. This can't be the auditor saying the schools are doing it. It can't be the, our auditor saying, you know, this five oh one C group is doing it. The monies are coming to the city first. We have a responsibility to be accountable for it.
There's no regularly released public reports on where, on how much there is, where there is. Nothing is transparent, nothing is online. There is very little public accountability for these funds. And the mayor's the puppet master of the whole thing. So you need to invite him to the meeting if you wanna get the answers, cause he's pulling all the strings. These are surrogates, just be so we're all crystal clear. These are surrogates of the mayor and he is the puppet master. Okay.
I just wanna note...
Just so we're all crystal clear.
Yeah, besides the mayor, I was also making a suggestion, we invite the uh, economic development people, Marcus Morel and maybe the chair of the HEDIC.
Very good. Counselor Bacon?
I would just note that the five oh one C three has to file a ten ninety-nine and a ten ninety-nine is public information. It doesn't give you everything you might wanna see, but it gives you something.
See if you can dig that report up. We'll see if it's being filed and what it's telling us. Okay. Uh, motion on the floors to send forty-two to the DGNR Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-three is introduced by Counselor Barley, that the DPW Superintendent and City Forester be invited to a Public Safety Committee meeting to discuss removing dead trees and tree stumps as well as planting replacement trees. Please be prepared to discuss an action plan that includes a budget.
Public safety.
Motion on the floors to send to Public Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-four. Forty-four is introduced by Counselor Barley, that United Material Management purchase a piece of land at six eighty-nine Main Street for three hundred thousand dollars. That the city accept an offer to do the same.
Thirty thousand.
Excuse me, thirty thousand dollars. I'm adding zeros a lot tonight. You can tell I'm getting tired. DGNR?
DGR.
Motion on the floors to send forty-four to DGNR. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-five is introduced by Counselor Bartley, that the city accept an offer from Thomas Cusano for two hundred thousand dollars for one Cabot Street. That's Counselor McGivern's favorite property.
Favorite building.
Yep. Uh, motion on the floors to send that over to DGNR?
We gotta dump this building, quick.
Can we approve this tonight? Yes, Counselors Sullivan.
Yeah, I'd like to be added to it and also after a friendly amendment.
Okay. Uh, adding Counselor Sullivan as a cosponsor and your amendment is?
Uh, at the end, uh, mayor's acceptance letter and additional info, information, including all competing offers.
Okay, additional information including?
All competing offers.
Including all competing offers. That motion has been made and seconded, one, to add Counselor Sullivan as a cosponsor, two, to add the clause after the word information in the last sentence of the order, including all competing offers. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion on the floors to send to DGNR. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-six. Forty-six is introduced by Counselor Brezner and that the Fire Chief request ISO to provide in writing whether or not the closing of Engine Two will have an impact on our ISO rating. Motion's been made and seconded, receive and refer to Public Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number forty-seven is introduced by Counselor Brezner and that the DPW consider placing a sign at the parcel of land just before the parking lot at Kenny Field that reads, "Slow Children at Play" or similar wording to let drivers know there is a field or playground ahead. Yep, motion has been made and seconded, receive, adopt, refer to the DPW.
Get a copy of Public Safety.
With a copy to Public Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number forty-eight from our award winner, Counselor Greeney. Order that the whole Police Department provide the panhandlers in the city a list of social and medical services available to them. If they continue to panhandle after notification and resist help, we will order more forceful action to deal in the public safety problem on our medians and intersections. Do we wanna send this over to Ordinance?
Ordinance.
Which is handling the issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Forty-nine introduced by Counselors Greeney and McGee, that the school department provide the council with a spreadsheet of all test scores, including MCAS data from the onset of state receivership to present.
Receive and adopt and refer to the Joint Committee.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, receive, uh, and refer, uh, over to the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee with a copy to the Mr. Reich. All, okay, Counselor Sullivan? You're in favor of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Could, could you add my name to forty-eight as well?
Okay. Retroactively adding Counselor Sullivan, item number forty-eight, please. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item fifty. Order that an ordinance change so that loudspeaker permits for use on city property shall be issued by the council, not the chief of police. Uh, I'd like to request this go to Ordinance.
Yeah, can you add my name to that, please?
Yep. And uh...
If I could add my name too?
Yep. Uh, you may be aware, counselors, that there are people that are requesting loudspeaker permits and they just seem to be getting handed out like candy with no, no follow-up by the police. And there was multiple ones. They had the problem last year, didn't file an order. This year it happened again with Community Field. People are coming up there, they're renting it. This one happened to be Memorial Weekend and they let somebody have a music rally up there. And it's every other word coming out almost is the F-bomb. And so all the people in the whole neighborhood are trying to sit in their backyards and enjoy their nice Memorial Day and it's boom, ba ba boom, ba ba boom, F this and F that. So, you know, hey, hold on a minute. You know, you can play music or you can do whatever, but, you know, we gotta have a bigger conversation about people being able to, you know, we gotta be reasonable with each other as, as human beings. Counselor Roman?
I really applaud this order. I think it's great and it goes hand in hand. There is currently, and you know, the chairwoman and I have talked about this, uh, to remove the loudspeaker permit period from businesses. We have businesses, depending on what part of town, that are getting approved for a loudspeaker permit for some part. Sometimes just a month, sometimes a season. It's stifling businesses here. So I look forward to this larger conversation and I think this is an excellent order.
Thank you. So motion on the floors to send fifty to Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fifty-one, that the Ordinance Committee, and this is also introduced with my cosponsor, Counselor Roman, that the, that, uh, through ordinance, that the criminal analyst position for the Police Department be created. Uh, I'd like to recommend this go to Ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, let's see, are these, no, this is okay. We've got a few different ones here. Counselor Leahy introduces to us Counselor, uh, number fifty-two. Order that the Forestry Department cut down the dead tree located in front of twenty-one Vadney.
Receive, adopt, send to Forestry.
Motion's been made and seconded, to receive, adopt, refer to Forestry. And adding Counselor McGee as a cosponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item fifty-three. Order that the Department of Public Works install much larger signs on the corner of Handed and Lincoln that reads uh, use turn signals? I think there's a word missing there somewhere. The sign that is there currently is extremely small and people don't see. So I think he just wants a bigger sign.
Receive, adopt.
Receive, adopt, refer to the DPW.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Jimmy did text me real quick. He had something like come up, that's why he couldn't make it this evening. I believe it's work related, but there, there's some issues with this. He, he's, he's okay with it going to committee. And the issues are, this is Lincoln Street where the neighbors came to Counselor Valentine at one time and asked that this sign be moved. Because anytime they put their blinker on and turn into their driveway, people thought they were just gonna go straight up Lincoln and they were, they were getting close to being rear-ended. So the neighbors have a say in this. I don't, I don't know about the sign, if they care about the size of the sign.
So he would prefer it go to Public Safety?
But just to let Josie weigh in and maybe in the neighborhood if they want to.
Alright, we'll let Josie and Jimmy hash this one out. All in favor of sending that to Public Safety?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fifty-four introduced by Counselor Leahy, that the DPW install a much larger si- oh.
Same thing, double.
Got a duplicate. Fifty-five. Fifty-three, fifty-four. Oh, we gotta, yeah, so how about fifty-four, we give a leave to withdraw?
So moved.
Yeah, motions were made and seconded to give item number fifty-four leave to withdraw. It's a duplicate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thought I was seeing double here. Alright, item number fifty-five introduced by Counselor Leahy. Board of Health and Tapestry Health, please report to the council Public Safety Committee concerning needle exchange.
Public Safety?
Motion on the floors to send fifty... Adding Counselor Bacon as a cosponsor.
Just to, just to point out, Counselor Leahy's asking that fifty-six be done by ordinance. Would it make sense to do both orders together?
Oh, to actually create a law that requires this? Okay. Alright, so uh, motion on the floors to send fifty-five to Ordinance. All in favor of that?
Aye.
With all that extra time with the DGR doing so many public hearings and sure...
The Ordinance Committee is just hanging around.
Fifty-five, so fifty-five, he said he wanted to go to Public Safety, cause it says they're just, they want Tapestry to help to come into the meeting to talk about statistics for last fiscal year. So I don't know if that, does that need, he wants that to be an ordinance?
No.
No, he wants the next order to be an ordinance.
So fifty-five is going to Public Safety, fifty-six is going to Ordinance.
Who's on first? Alright, so let's reconsider our action. And uh, on fifty-five.
I just thought you might wanna just do it all together.
No, we're good, we're good, we're good.
Somebody's...
I got it. I'm a little slow on the take here, but I got it. Reconsider our action on fifty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the floors to send fifty-five to Public Safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fifty-six, also on the needle exchange issue, motion on the floors to send fifty-six to Ordinance. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fifty-seven.
Public Safety?
That Safety Joe or Dan? Yeah, this is probably, this is probably that, huh? Most, uh, Counselor Leahy would like Tapestry to, uh, make a dirty needle hotline available on voicemail, website, and Facebook. Motion on the floors to send that over to Public Safety. Maybe we would've copied to Tapestry if we could do it. Maybe they could give some thoughts on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Fifty-eight from Counselor LeBrow Martinez, requests per Lyman Terrace tenants that John Street, Oliver Street, Lower Hamden Street be designated for those residents living within Lyman Terrace, suggesting the tenants be provided with parking stickers per household since they feel parking becomes limited when those come to work in the downtown and parking around the quarter. Uh, and then what a friendly amendment to have the clerk administer all that?
Quarter door.
No, I'm only kidding. Cause that's resident parking, right? Yeah. Uh, okay, so motion, you wanna send that to Ordinance?
Ordinance, yeah.
Yep, okay. All in favor of sending fifty-eight to Ordinance?
Aye.
Resident parking. Favorite topic of the clerk's office. Fifty-nine introduced by Counselor LeBrow Martinez, that in order requesting the VFW Military Purple of Heart, that a sign be placed on the closest pole to the Vietnam Veteran Memorial Bridge to be placed on the Hoyoc side, that the bridge is state property, so it needs to be a pole versus the bridge. What would...
That was a request before his retirement and he submitted.
Oh, from who, Jim?
Yeah.
What would he like us to do? Uh, oh, adopt and put the sign? Maybe send this over to DPW?
Yeah, so is that where it would go, to DPW?
Yeah, DPW handles our sign. So I made, uh, motion.
Yeah, they dropped it off here.
We appreciate that deference to the DPW, to our authority and power. They said they won't do it unless it comes from the council, so thank you, DPW. Take a, stand up and take a bow, City Council. And uh, so motion on the floors to receive, adopt, and refer this to the DPW. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Love our DPW. Alright, Counselor Lisi LeBrow Martinez, Roman Sullivan and Valentin came together for an order in mark number sixty that the Ordinance Committee hold a joint public hearing with the planning board on creation of zoning related to recreational marijuana cultivation, production, retail, dah 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 dah. Um, adding Counselor, can I add Counselor Jordane as a cosponsor on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna wanna have, uh, create our ordinance as soon as we can on this, right?
Yes.
That's the game plan. Hopefully by the end of the year, we can get this done. That's my game plan. Uh, motion on the floors to send that to Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, item number sixty-one, also from Counselors Lisi LeBrow Martinez, Roman and Valentin, that the City Council consider adopting a program similar to Albuquerque, New Mexico, There's a Better Way or Portland, Oregon's Opportunity Crew as an innovative and productive means for addressing the city's panhandling. means for addressing the city's panhandling issues with meaningful work-based alternatives. And then there's a number of websites cited.
Receive and send to the mayor.
Yeah, Mr. President, I was going to make a recommendation, receive, send to the mayor as well.
Motion has been made, it's seconded, to receive, adopt, refer this to the mayor.
No, I didn't say adopt.
No, just receive and send to-
Oh, receive to refer to the mayor, and to what committee?
DGNR.
DGNR, who's, no, how about ordinance? Ordinance is handling all the panhandling.
Goes to ordinance.
Okay, so cop, motion on the floor is to send to ordinance with a copy to the mayor. All in favor of that?
Mr. President?
Yes, Council-
Could I be added on to that order?
Of course you may.
Thank you.
In fact, we'd be insulted if you wouldn't. All right, adding Council Tomlin's name to that. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Mr. President, can I suspend the rules to take of items sixty-two through sixty-four as a package, please?
Of course. Motion on the floor is to take items sixty-two through sixty-four as a package, all in favor of that? Posed, so moved. Sixty-two is brought to us by way of Councilors Leacy, Roman, that, uh, the city of Hoyok create a retail center zone. Sixty-three, create retail center zone, and then lays out a bunch of parcels. Sixty-four, from Leacy, Roman, city of Hoyok remove code of ordinances, appendix A, shopping center zone, center district, and replace with retail center.
Mr. President, before we move any further, I would like to make a amendment to actually strike the last lines in all three of these committee reports, and then I'll make a statement after.
Okay. Motion on the floor has been made, it's seconded, to strike the words "refile" from four twenty, April two thousand sixteen, due to inaction by committee chair, from all three orders.
Mr. President?
Uh, hold on, under discussion, Council Roman.
Yes, I, I already spoken to the chairwoman, I apologize sincerely, I read the context of the order, I didn't see these last lines in there, but I at no point, co-sponsored, I signed on so I could, um, help this conversation happen, our colleague Council Leacy's not here this evening, but I at no point, in being one of those committee chairs, and being an individual who has refiled tons of orders in this body for various committees, I would never, ever publicly call out a committee chair at all like that, so I wholeheartedly apologize to my colleague Lingda personally before tonight, and I want to just do so publicly, I didn't read that, um, I just read the content of the language, I didn't see that last line, I think that that's disrespect to my colleague, and I just want to per, publicly say that and acknowledge that I apologize for that, I would never co-file on that. I did reach out to my colleague Council Leacy, um, she apologizes too, I know she's not here, she's going to have to do that herself, but that line wasn't supposed to be included, it was supposed to be a more of a note for that, but I just personally didn't see it, I texted them, and I saw that this evening, and I think actually, my colleague, and I always call my mentor, my calming force, my Yoda over there, Dave Bartley, was actually the one who brought this to my attention last night, so I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that, but I just publicly wanted to say that, that no way did I publicly or intentionally do this, it was to bring this back to ordinance to start fresh, but, uh, I'm always a man who steps up and takes whatever is, is within my purview, so I just wanted to publicly say that.
Well, thank you, Council Roman, as always, you're a very big man, and, uh, we're, we always, once, uh, once again appreciate your grace and tact, so, uh, thank you for doing that. Council Vacan?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for those comments, Counselor, I, I appreciate them. I am going to steal a page for a minute out of Council McGivern's book and take a little trip down history lane, but I'll, I'll try to do it in the abbreviated fashion.
Boy, because-
It was me!
It's not even done by Council McGivern.
Some, some of the counselors here weren't in the room, but I just want to remind my colleagues that in two thousand fifteen, we had numerous public hearings on this very same order, it sat in this chamber, tabled for weeks. So, within fewer than two years, we've had multiple public hearings, multiple debate, it was in front of the full council, and did not receive approval through the council. So the outcome was not as desired by the maker, but it was fully vetted, fully discussed, and debated through the end of two thousand fifteen, when the maker was the chair of the committee. Thank you.
Very good, motion.